I am now calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselwoman Rogan-C.
Here.
Counselwoman McGee.
Here.
Counselwoman Dwyer.
Here.
Counselwoman Boike.
Present.
Counselwoman Noonan.
Here.
Counselwoman LaFerty.
Here.
Counselwoman Moore is present. We have a quorum.
Next item.
Next item is number four, adoption of the consent agenda, so moved.
Support LaFerty with discussion.
Discussion, Mr. LaFerty.
Thank you. When the computer fails, move to old technology. And... I'm sorry, that's the last item on the regular agenda. I yield.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is adoption of the agenda, so moved with discussion.
Support LaFerty.
Discussion, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a couple items to add. Adding as 11A under miscellaneous, which will be 11, that's 11A, that is the Water and Sewer Disposal System Revenue Bond Series 2025 Notice of Intent Resolution. Removing item 12A. This was an ordinance that we passed on a first reading at the last meeting, but since our meetings were so close together, it went on to this and it shouldn't have gone. The City Attorney's Office has 10 days to review any ordinance the council passes on a first reading, so we're pulling that for the next meeting. And we're adding as 10B was an item that was a public hearing on November 26th, and it was, a motion was made to table this item until May 20th, '25, so we're adding that as 10B.
Madam Secretary, is that, that item had a public hearing already?
Yes, it did.
It's going to be an administrative because you've already held a public.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So that's an admin hearing, okay. And then adding as, as item, oh, 12D is the city-born and urban city community garden lease approval. So that would be 12D.
11A is bond series and 10B is, can you give that one to me again?
I'm sorry.
10B?
10B is Chalmers.
Chalmers.
Administrative hearing.
Any additional discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will...
What was the first item?
11B is the bond.
11B, same.
11A, sorry, bond series.
11A.
Okay, I will call the question. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is 6A, calendar of pending matters, motion to receive and file.
Support LaFerty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next item.
Next item is 7A, approval of the bills of the general revenue fund, so moved.
Support LaFerty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is 6A, calendar of pending matters, motion to receive and file.
Support LaFerty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next item.
Next item is 7A, approval of the bills of the general revenue fund, so moved.
Support LaFerty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is 7B, approval of the bills of the water and sewer system, so moved.
Support Dwyer.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is audience participation for agenda items only.
Good evening, members of the audience who would like to address City Council. This evening may do so by filling out an audience form to the right side of the stage. There is additional time at the end of the meeting for general topics. This audience is for agenda items only. There is a clock up front, which will give you your three minutes. First is Mayor Lori Stone. Oh, your microphone's not on. Try that.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you this evening to speak on behalf of my appointees, Fire Commissioner Skip McAdams and Fire Chief Orin Ferguson. This is item 13B on the council agenda, originally introduced last week. These are two distinguished fire professionals, distinguished in our department, in our city, and across the region. These are two gentlemen who have integrity and lead our department with the forethought of community safety, firefighter and firefighter paramedic safety, and to ensure. And that's what our community recognizes and appreciates from the public safety of our fire department. They are award-winning. They work hard to continuously be improving. I know that you, many of you, have joined us on occasion for just some of the things that in the last few years that they've implemented, including working on our new fire houses and making sure that they are up to standards for state-of-the-art, making sure that our firefighter paramedics have what they need. They have helped reimplement, making sure that our city has EMS that work for us and respond to our needs. They have worked on procuring state-of-the-art training technology. They have brought to our community equipment in order to ensure the safety of our residents. And I am proud to appoint them to Fire Commissioner and Fire Chief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Wilbert "Skip" McAdams, Commissioner.
It's a little unusual that I'm speaking about myself, but feels weird. But anyway, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, for your consideration, for my reappointment to the position of Fire Commissioner. I have served this city dutifully for 17-plus years, always with the goal of making Warren Fire Department the best department, not only in the county and in the state, but in the nation. I know that's always going to be debatable by any fire chief, any fire commissioner. They all think that their department is the best and should be recognized as the best. However, I don't do it alone. I do it by working with the fire chief, with the fire union, with the executive board, with the administration, with the council, to accomplish the goals, to get out there my vision that must adhere to the vision of elected officials, and then I implement those plans, those strategies, their vision, and adopt it as my own. That has been my underlying goal as Fire Commissioner and as Fire Chief in my previous employment. For me, doing anything immoral, illegal, is not anything I would agree to, or anything that violates my moral principles. I don't believe in attacks. I have always been respectful, will always be respectful, to elected officials because I get it, you're elected, I'm appointed. You guys run for office every four years. I try to keep my job every day because I'm an at-will employee. That's my only role. And in doing so, implement programs, policies, and procedures that better the department. Can I do everything that I want to do? No. Everything, anything that I do that I focus on, or, and the fire chief focuses on, that means something else that we're not focused on. And there's only so many hours in a day, in a week, in a year, outside of other meetings and commitments that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Orin Ferguson.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for this opportunity to set the record straight. I hope that I get a chance to be reappointed. I'm going to give you a little bit of my accomplishments. Over the course of my 32-year career, I have demonstrated results-driven leadership style focused on operational excellence, strategic resource management, and personal development. My initiatives reflect a clear commitment to preparing our department for the future while honoring our traditions and supporting our firefighters today. One of my early initiatives involved leading the cleanup and reorganization of the apparatus garage. Rather than allowing the space to remain underutilized, I spearheaded its transformation into a dedicated training area for our technical rescue and hazmat teams. This project enhanced our in-house training capacity and helped foster specialized response readiness, reducing the need for outside facility of funding. Understanding the importance of department culture and community presence, I created and implemented our Honor Guard team, establishing a formal presence for ceremonies, funerals, and civic events. This initiative not only honors those who served, but today, but also provides a means to honor those who served in the department in the past, and also reflects our department's pride and professionalism. From a capital improvement standpoint, I have managed several large-scale infrastructure projects. I oversaw a $2.1 million concrete renovation across all six fire stations, addressing longstanding facilities deficiencies and improving operational safety. Additionally, I directed a full renovation of six station kitchens, replacing flooring, ceilings, cabinetry, countertops, and appliances. As part of this initiative, I also created a designated lunchroom for fire administration staff, enhancing workplace morale and wellness. Fleet modernization has been a priority under my leadership. I identified and replaced aging high-maintenance division vehicles with newer, more reliable models, significantly reducing annual repair costs. I standardized our fleet for improved efficiency and maintenance capability and added six utility vehicles to better support station operations. I also led the acquisition of new fire apparatus with advanced capabilities, improving our frontline readiness and ensuring our crews have the apparatus, vehicles, equipment, and tools they need to respond effectively. Currently, I'm overseeing the planning and the construction of two new fire stations. These facilities are being designated with a focus on long-term department needs, energy efficiency, and modern functionality. I have maintained close coordination with the city leadership, contractors, and internal stakeholders to keep these projects aligned with budget timeline and operational goals. Across all these efforts, I have emphasized fiscal responsibility, forward-looking leadership, and team empowerment. My goal as Fire Chief is to continue building a department that is resilient, responsive, and respected, and one that supports its personnel, maintains a public trust, and prepared for...
You're at time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council, for your time.
Mr. Vanderlinen.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to speak about the use or misuse of the atrium. I understand Mr. Jonathan is going to go over this. I did a FOIA on the atrium for a one-year period. It was from July to July last year, and in there I asked for everyone who rented the place, how much to pay, and so forth. When I got my FOIA back, it was interesting that the swearing-in of my zong was not on there. Also, the use of the atrium by the gay parade was not on there. It's funny how certain things are being paid for and rented out in that atrium, and the mayor in her agenda is not. I have great concern about this misuse and abuse. I also have a concern about the upcoming gay parade on June 14th, which all real Americans know is the US Army birthday.
Mr. Vanderlinen, this is for agenda items, so stick to the agenda.
Is the gay parade going to be in the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Is the gay parade going to be in the atrium?
Mr. Vanderlinen, it's not on the agenda today.
This is part of the atrium conflict.
I have no idea, and it's not on the agenda, so please keep your comments, two agenda items only. You can speak at the end if you would like to speak about something else.
Well, I'm speaking about the atrium.
Proceed.
And if the gay parade is going to be in the atrium again with all the sex toys and everything else, it fits under this thing. The atrium was used with sex toys and everything else, and I don't recall it being approved or funded by this council. I don't know who this mayor is with their communist thoughts and everything else, and this council should be upset and doing something about her misuse of her position, which I see because you're part of her flag team, that you won't say or do anything about. This is about your ineffectiveness, Mrs. Rogan-C, pure and simple. Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you. That is the end of audience. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next item is 9A, resolution in honor of Bishop Earl Jerome Wright, Jr. I believe this is your item.
It is, thank you. Anyone willing to make a motion and support?
So moved.
Support.
So moved, LaFerty.
Thank you. A member of the community reached out to me as there is a pastor, a longtime pastor that passed away, and I put together a resolution documenting some of his life here in the city, honoring the life of Bishop Earl Jerome Wright, Jr., whereas the presiding bishop, Dr. J, sorry, J. Drew Scherd, along with the Michigan and Ontario Council of Bishops mourns the transition of Bishop Earl J. Wright, Jr., PhD, who passed away Sunday, May 4th, 2025, whereas Bishop Wright served the Greater Miller Memorial Church of God in Christ on Nine Mile and Warren, Michigan for over nine years. Whereas the City of Warren extends our prayers and sincere condolences to his loving wife, Lady Laine P. Wright, PhD, sons Earl Jerome Wright III and Edmund Wright, his brother Michael and sister evangelist Marvy Wright, doctor of ministry. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Warren City Council, we honor the life of Bishop Wright and his contributions to our community. Be it further resolved that the City Council thanks all of our community leaders for the work they do to contribute to the fabric of our community. Adopted this day of May 20th, 2025, by the City Council of Warren. And they're having a service tomorrow, so they're going to read this at the service.
Moment of silence.
Yes, thank you. Moment of silence? Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order, I'm informed the live streaming is down.
Next item, or any other announcements, rather.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Moore?
Yes. The Warren City Council proudly recognizes and honors the distinguished careers and dedicated public service of Lieutenant Kevin Borsey and Lieutenant Jonathan Pickett, who are retiring from the Warren Police Department after many years of exemplary service. Lieutenant Kevin Borsey has served the citizens of Warren with unwavering commitment for over 25 years. Throughout his distinguished career, Lieutenant Borsey exemplified integrity, professionalism, and a steadfast dedication to public service. He has been a mentor to younger officers, a leader in times of crisis, and a reassuring presence in the community. His legacy is one of quiet strength, diligence, and the deep respect he earned from his peers, supervisors, and residents alike. Lieutenant Jonathan Pickett concludes a notable career spanning just over 22 years with the Warren Police Department, but he served previously with the Port Huron Police Department. He is known for his calm demeanor, thoughtful leadership, I understand, a pretty good sense of humor, and unshakable commitment to justice. Lieutenant Pickett played a vital role in protecting and serving our city. His tireless efforts to uphold the law and safeguard our neighborhoods have left an indelible mark on the Warren Police Department and the community he served with pride. The Warren City Council extends its deepest gratitude to both Lieutenant Borsey and Lieutenant Pickett for their exceptional service, leadership, and sacrifice. Their contributions to the safety and well-being of the residents of Warren will be remembered for years to come. As they enter retirement, we wish them health, happiness, and fulfillment in all the years ahead. They have earned the thanks of a grateful city.
That's it for me. Any other announcements? Ms. McGee?
On tomorrow, the Warren Skilled Trades Job Fair will take place from 1:00 to 7:00 PM at our Warren Community Center. Just want to let you know that we will have, I believe, about 30 skilled trades and other employers there at the location. It will be on tomorrow again from 1:00 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 21st, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Warren Community Center here at this location. I had put some flyers at the end of the stage for all of those who wish to share, and I look forward to seeing you there tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Madam Chair.
Mr. LaFerty?
Thank you. On Sunday, this past Sunday, my wife and parents attended the finale of the Warren Symphony Orchestra, and I want to say, not only was it a finale, it was an outstanding finale to what was nothing short of a spectacular season for the symphony. Congratulations to our Warren Symphony Orchestra Board of Directors. Ms. Moore sits on there, not as an official from the council, but has the privilege of sitting there. I know our mayor and several other distinguished members of our community lead that board, and they do a fine job. The conductor, Andrew Neer. I found, sitting at the symphony, I always find it to be entertaining, but I have to figure out, either I'm listening to the music or I'm watching the conductor. And the orations, his orchestrations, his movement is just about as entertaining as listening to the music. He is nothing short of an incredible asset to this city. We are deeply, deeply appreciative for what he brings to the symphony and through his leadership. I do want to say that if you have not been to the Warren Symphony and you listen to music of any kind, take advantage of your local symphony. This is a wonderful opportunity. I would love to see more audience members. There were plenty of seats available on Sunday, so it's a wonderful opportunity to break away from technology and, yes, the baseball game from time to time, and enjoy wonderful music. So Warren Symphony has, will have another season ahead, and I look forward to attending all of their performances. So, well done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other announcements?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. LaFerty said. We also dedicated the symphony performance on Sunday in the memory of Lurleen Sears, who passed away on Saturday. She has been a long, long, long-time resident of Warren. She and her husband have been such a huge presence in the city. They're extremely generous and support the arts in many, many ways. She will be deeply missed. She had a very good life and passed away at the age of 91. So maybe we could have a moment of silence for Lurleen Sears.
Any other announcements? Okay, that is the end of the announcements. Next item.
Next item is 10A, which is an administrative hearing that was tabled on November 12th, 2024. Request to appeal the determination of nuisance abatement of house and garage from demolition located at 32431. How much under the nuisance abatement program? Motion to remove from the table.
Support to remove from the table.
All in favor, can I do an all in favor from, all in favor of removing it from the table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item is removed.
Motion to approve.
Support.
With discussion.
Discussion, Mr. LaFerty.
Thank you. Through the chair too, Mr. Lizet, who is already...
Good evening, Council. This home, I visited the site today, and I was invited in by the contractor when I got there, and the interior is near complete. There's a new kitchen in this place, new bathroom, floors, doors painted. The roof is complete, gutter's complete, but now they're, the contractor informed me that they're going to paint the entire outside and bring a landscape company in next. So they're on track, they're moving forward, so this one's going very well, no issues with this one. So the interior is near complete, we have trade permits on file, we have approved rough inspections on file, so this one's looking good, we're near completion.
Thank you. So at this point, we tabled the motion to approve at the meeting back six months ago, and so at this point, we have to make a motion to remove this based on your, what I'm expecting a recommendation to remove this from abatement.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say we can remove this item. It's near completion at this point, and it's going to be going up for sale to a homeowner, not going to be rented, so I'm happy to hear that. And I think it'd be safe to remove it from nuisance and let them know, and I'll just monitor it through the permit process and city cert process and make sure it gets completed.
Awesome.
I mean, there's no doubt in my mind it'll be completed. It's, we're at right now probably 80 to 90% complete now, so.
I've seen the work trucks out there in my travels, it's been great, great to see that. 15 years too late, but better late than never in this case.
I was happy that I got invited in, so I could do a quick walkthrough and see the progress, so that made me more confident in making the decision to as well.
Wonderful. Madam Chair, I will modify or amend my motion to approve the removal of the subject address, Madam Secretary.
I think this was a request to appeal the determination, so we could approve the appeal, correct? The wording was they requested to appeal the determination.
Uh-huh.
So we would vote to approve the appeal, correct?
Well, I'm showing on my records that when we came here on the 11/12/24, we granted six months, obtained city certs, and actually approved and suspended demolition. Yeah, that's where we were at at that time. So we suspended the demolition, granted that time, six months to get permits and city certs.
So what would the motion be, Mr. Schroeder?
Would a motion to remove from abatement be appropriate then?
Yes, okay. So I'll amend my motion to remove from the abatement process.
Support.
So, Mr. LaFerty, you originally made the motion, Ms. Moore, you supported it.
Oh, I thought I did.
Yep.
I agree with the amendment either way.
We're on the same page, just clarifying when I call the question.
Sorry.
Any other discussions? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. Mr. LaFerty?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boike?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yay!
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan-C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
The next item is 10B. The next item is ten B, which was a public hearing held on November twenty, on November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Request to approve the demolition of a house and shed located at seventy-five, eighty-four Chalmers through the nuisance abatement program. I assume, yes, this was tabled, so motion to remove from the table.
Support to remove from the table.
All in favor to remove the item from the table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is removed.
Motion to approve.
A support.
With discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Lafferty.
Through the chair to Mr. Lizet. You haven't left yet.
All right, this one, not so much good news. The owner is here, I noticed, today. City certs were issued. We did initial, our first round, we were locked out in eleven, fourteen, twenty-five. We did get in for an initial city cert inspection on twelve, twelve, twenty-four. There are no past inspections. I have not had any further inspections, nor have I any permits issued on this property. It remains, I believe the home has been cleaned out, but that's as far as it's gone, and I think it's going to be up to the owner to convince you that they're going to move forward with this property, because I have not had any further progress on this one.
Through the chair to the owner of the property, sir. Do you please state your, your name for the record?
My name is Sal Bizzy. Good evening.
Sal, Sal Bizzy?
Yes.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
B-I-Z-Z-Y.
And you own the, the property in question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you tell me about it?
Yes, so I purchased a property back in September of twenty-twenty-four, and it's been, over the past six months, I encountered significant delays due to the winter season. And it's been, it's been a little difficult to secure labor and jobs during the winter. And I also had a baby in the last six months, so it's, it's been holding me back to do the work on the home. But I'm currently actively working on getting the home restored and getting it, to, back to code compliant for, to restore it for either resale or occupancy.
Have you applied for any permits with the building department?
I was just going to apply for the electrical permits and the building. I was advised to hold up until this meeting.
Okay. Have you been in contact with any of the building inspectors or Mr. Lizet regarding this property since your purchase in September of twenty-four?
Yes, I have a couple of times.
Okay, and what was the, the issue with locking out the building department from inspections in December?
Locking, so there's, there's no, there's no lock or anything on the property at the moment. The, the property is open. The, the doors are, they don't have a lock on them, so anybody can freely, can now out of the, out of the properties.
Mr. Bizzy, do you, do you feel that you have the appropriate financial wherewithal to successfully rehabilitate this property?
Yes, I do.
All right. Stand by for just a moment, Mr. Lizet. Can you clarify the, the event on twelve, twelve, twenty-four, the lockout?
Well, I have, I did bring the inspection history with me.
Thank you.
I did not print out the actual reports, but I do have the inspection history with me. All right. So the city certs were issued in October seventeenth of twenty-four, and we, the inspections were scheduled for eleven, fourteen, twenty-four, which all our inspectors were locked out at that time. I believe on four, fourteen, let's see, and we had a re-inspection where everybody did get in, and all the, they were all disapproved on twelve, so we did get doing an initial on twelve, twelve, twenty-four for our city cert inspections for all five trades, for zoning, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and building. So right now, I guess what we're looking for right now is, we need an honest timeline. Is the honest, are we going to, is he going to fix this property? Is he not going to fix it? That's what I need to know, and that's what we need to know. Is there going to be an honest attempt to, to repair this house? That's, that's what we're looking for at this point.
And, all right, thank you. Back to Mr. Bizzy. I just have one more question for you. The, the taxes, I see you picked up the property in September. The taxes, are you current on your taxes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I am able to confirm that based on, on the BSNA. All right. With your statement that you do have the financial means to rehabilitate the property, my, my preference is always to give the petitioner an opportunity, but it's, it's a measured opportunity. Mr. Lizet in the building, on, on behalf of the building department, all of the inspectors, certificates of compliance, everything that comes with it, is contained within the motion I'm going to make, and I believe that, you know, we can give you sufficient amount of time to obtain all of your permits, all five permit inspections that you need, and work directly with the building department, keeping open lines of communication, and ensuring that you are adhering to your timeframe. But what I'm willing to do is make a motion to table this to June, July, Tuesday, August twelfth, at which time Mr. Lizet can give us a report and indicate whether or not you are making progress in complying similar to the item that you just heard before you. Is that acceptable?
Yes, thank council.
Okay. Madam Chair, that's my motion to table. Date certain, Tuesday, August twelfth. If there's support.
Support.
To table.
Motion to table is made. I will call the question, Mr. Lafferty.
Yes, to table.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes, to table.
Ms. McGee.
Yes, to table.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is the Notice of Intent Resolution for Water and Sewer, Water Sewer and Sewage Disposal System Revenue Bond Series Twenty-Twenty-Five. Motion to approve is discussion.
Support, Lafferty.
Discussion, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I see you're here and you have.
Good evening, council. Richard Fox, City Controller. I also have our bond counsel, Ron Lizcom from Millcamp and Paddock and Stone.
Nice to meet you, sir. Welcome.
We're here to answer any questions. Just one point that I just want to bring up on this item is, is if you notice in the resolution, it, it says a hundred million dollars. So what I was informed is that, as we're aware, we, we're looking to get, we got to prove for SRF for seventy-five million. But this process, we're going to have to go out for bids, which is going to happen here in the next month to two months as part of this process for this loan. And if the, if the bids come in over seventy-five thousand and we didn't put the, exceed the seventy-five thousand in the resolution, then we couldn't ask the SRF or the state for the additional dollars. So then we'd have to try to figure out where we're coming up with the additional dollars. By doing this, if it comes in at eighty-five million, then the states, my understanding is they do have some additional dollars, that we'd be eligible for that, and then we'd still get the, the low-interest loan for that, for that additional amount. I just wanted to add that point. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is twelve B, which is Amendment to Chapter Two of the Warren Code of Ordinances relating to the City Historical Commission, reducing the number of board members from nine members to five members. Second reading. Motion to approve, just for discussion for a moment.
Support, Lafferty.
Discussion, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. During our budget hearings, we came aware that there were some problems in the historical commission. They didn't have really enough commissioners to get some of the things done they wanted to do. At that time, we suggested decreasing the number of members, which we did write the, or have the ordinance, Mr. Schroeder wrote it. Mr. Rent then contacted, I think, Mr. Dwyer and said, could we have it at seven as opposed to five? And further discussion with Mr. Rent today, he was asking us to remove this because their bylaws stated that a quorum is based on how many members are present. That is actually contrary to the city charter, and Mr. Schroeder indicated today, when I discussed this matter with him, that there could be superseding federal or state laws concerning historical commissions, correct? State, you want to explain it instead of me trying?
Well, with respect to the quorum requirement, it's a majority of the number of commissioners. I think there's a question of whether that means the number that's set by ordinance, which is nine, which would be five to have a quorum, or the number of currently sworn members. My, I think a plain reading of the charter would be that the number of commissioners would be the number that is set by ordinance. I see Ms. Michaels nodding her head. It always is a big relief to see that. And so I think that with, their bylaws can be amended. I don't know if they realize they can amend their bylaws, and their bylaws cannot contradict the charter or the general laws of the state. So I think that you could reduce it to seven, you could stay at nine, but if you reduce it to seven, then their quorum becomes four. To the extent that their bylaws say something different with, on the quorum, we can clear that up. I'll work with Ms. Michaels and get them the citation in the charter with regard to quorum. So I hope that answers the question?
Yep.
Okay.
And I would make a motion to table this item.
Support to table. I'll defer to Mr. Dwyer on the support to table. As ex officio.
Support to table.
Okay.
Dwyer.
Tabling motion, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries, next item.
Thank you. The next item is twelve C, Councilmember Jonathan Lafferty, Discussion and Raise City of Warren Sponsorship Funding and Oversight of Asian American and Pacific Islander Celebration Held on Saturday, May seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. So moved.
Support, Lafferty, with discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin with my questions, I do want to provide some clarification as to what this item is and what this item is not. This item is not about the Asian American and/or Pacific Islander community, its representatives, or being upset with the celebration of anyone's heritage. This item is about our policies, our process, and our procedure that the city is required to follow when an event is being held on city property. We've had this discussion before, and as of yet, it remains to be unresolved. This is an examination of the city-sponsored Asian and Pacific Islander event occurring on Saturday, May seventeenth, at the Warren Community Center. And not in the all-too-recent past, the council held nearly two-hour committee of the whole on rental policies of both the City Hall atrium and the city square. A moratorium was placed on such events. Policies are supposed to be edited and updated and provided back to this council. So I was surprised when I saw that advertisements were placed on social media, some posted by the mayor herself with a clear indication of "meet your host" in quotes, "City of Warren." The mayor was also thanked publicly for organizing the event. I also received a text message from the Communications Department from the City of Warren inviting me to this event. I have a series of questions, and as part of the record, asked to have this added to the calendar of pending items and have this information provided back to council. Number one, who sponsored this event? By all accounts, I have found that the mayor's office not only sponsored this event, but were responsible for organizing it. Madam Chair, I did not ask for anybody to approach the microphone.
Mayor, unless someone asks you to come up and speak.
Okay, happy to. If you have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderlinen, you, you're out of order, Mr. Vanderlinen. Please don't be disrespectful. Thank you. Laughing is equally disrespectful, Mr. Vanderlinen. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lafferty. You have the floor.
Thank you. And these questions do not need to be transcribed. They will be part of the record, and they will be provided as part of the council resolutions sent to, sent from the council office to the mayor's office following our period for reconsideration. I will repeat, number one, who sponsored this event? Number two, from what budget did the funds originate for this event? Number three, who authorized the expenditures for this event? Number four, who decided that the city would single out a specific heritage to celebrate at city expense? Now, with celebrations having, having already been held, I must ask, when will the Polish heritage celebration occur? It's no doubt and no secret that I'm proud of my Polish heritage, but I'm also Irish, so when will that one be held? Mr. Dwyer is German and Italian, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps he would like to have a celebration of the German and Italian heritages, along with all the rest of you. I was asked this Sunday, while I was at an event, when the city would host the Latvians for the celebration of their heritage. Number six, was insurance obtained for this event? If so, who paid for the insurance of the event? And if the city was responsible for the insurance, out of what budget did the insurance get paid from? Number seven, was a rental agreement signed for this event? If so, which department was the rental agreement with? Who were the signatories on the event, on the agreement, and a copy of that agreement to be provided? These are many of the questions that we asked council at our Committee of the Whole, all related to the differences between the Parks and Recreation Department, the Downtown Development Authority, and the differences in those policies and documents that were very loosely defined and even more so loosely followed as a matter of process and procedure. We could find, in many cases, when we questioned both Mr. Cassa Santa and Mr. Bomarito at the time, there were no documents, no policies that were followed, and no documentation for several events that were in question earlier at that time when we held that meeting. No documentation could be helped, or could be found. So I question, with all of those unanswered questions still remaining, we have no documentation, no updates in place, how did this get by the administration without any single, any single documentation update coming to council saying, we've resolved all of these issues and we're moving forward? But the question still remains, why did we single out a specific heritage? We have to be equal. We have to provide equality to all groups if we're going to do this at taxpayer expense. There are no excuses for this. As much as I love celebrating individual, beautiful, diverse heritages, it is not to be at the city expense. If a private group, a nonprofit, organization... be at the city expense. If a private group, a nonprofit, organization wants to come and rent the auditorium and have a multicultural display, dancing and music and foods of, of all kinds, we'll welcome you to rent our facilities, and you're part of our community. Of course, you're welcome. And there's a rental agreement for you to sign. There's insurance to be paid. There are, there's a process to be followed. So, these questions, in addition to renewing our request to have the DDA policies and the Parks and Recreation policies updated and returned to this council for adoption, or consideration and adoption, is renewed in this motion. The contents of my questions and my statement will be provided to Ms. Camp as part of the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Noonan and then Ms. Moore.
Right, so Councilman Lafferty, as I understand it, there is a moratorium on having any events such as those. Until we get all of that back and resolved, and then the procedures have to be followed. And, and the council's responsible for authorizing budgets. I think these are some of the underlying issues that you're, I just wanted to confirm with you that those were some of the things at stake here.
As to the moratorium, Madam Chair, as to the moratorium, we addressed specifically during Committee of the Whole, and then our action following that was City Hall atrium and the, the outdoor portion of, of City Hall. There may have been some existing events that I believe at the time were already signed. And so, those, those particular areas are not available. The event was held in this building, in, in the, in
Yes.
this building, so that was not part of, I don't believe, and Mr. Schroeder can correct me if Warren Community Center was included in, in that at the time. I don't believe it was.
Well, the, the reason why I brought it up was because I enjoyed the Sister City event that was held in the atrium. But I think wouldn't that also have been, would that have been included in the moratorium or, or not?
No, the, the moratorium, the restrictions we placed around the moratorium would not prevent the mayor or the administration from performing their duties inside City Hall and making use of the facilities for governmental purpose.
And that would be a governmental purpose?
That's correct.
The Sister Cities, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Of course. But as, as to your, Madam Chair, to your, your budget questions, absolutely. We set the budget. We expect it to be followed.
Thank you kindly. I yield.
Ms. McGee?
I, I would like to call the mayor up to the, to the podium. I did ask the question about who sponsored, and I was told that the vendors sponsored. I am all about having community events, community outreach events for all cultures, for that matter. It doesn't matter what, which one. I had a good time. I appeared in it. Of course, I would like to know the policies moving forward, as you stated. It's just that I believe moving forward, we were also working on, to the point where the money would not come out, or the fund would not come out, just the people's pocket, the taxpayers' pocket. We are working towards trying to get grant funding, sponsorship, in order that we would not have to provide for those events. And so, I would like the mayor to explain how it was sponsored, and what are you planning on doing as far as moving forward with the policies from this point on?
Mr. Boyke?
Go ahead.
Those questions were asked in Mr. Lafferty's request for information. I don't think it's proper to have the mayor answer it down so we get a political speech. We're asking for facts.
I'd be happy to provide them. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mr. Boyke has the floor. Mr. Boyke?
And, and I respect, I respect Councilman's request for that, but I don't think this is the time for that. These questions were asked last year by Councilman Dwyer, myself.
Mr. Boyke, Ms. McGee still has the floor. I hear what you're saying, and Ms. McG-
Okay, so let the mayor have a seat, and she could answer through the administration.
Ms. McGee, as you all do, have the right to call up anyone-
I asked a couple of questions. If she have any other, if you feel that she should not, moving forward, ask her any additional questions, that's fine. But I want to know what she's planning on doing with the policies, because if we given her the questions and went to the office, it's obvious that it's not, it had not been answered, or we didn't get a proper answer as of yet.
And we will limit the discussion to the questions that she is proposing. Ms. McGee?
So, those are my two questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. On behalf of the administration, just as any my department-
One, one moment.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer.
We need a motion by this, by this council to suspend the rules to allow someone from the audience to speak during one of our items.
We don't, because we call people up from the administration all the time. The mayor is no different. She is the administration.
Yep.
I mean, unless there's some other rule that I'm, I mean, that we call Mr. Mazarelli or Ms. Michaels or Mr. Fox up whenever we have additional questions.
I, I disagree with the, the ruling of the chair, but I'm not going to challenge it. I, I will reiterate that my motion was to have these answers provided to council in a written form. So, having the answers provided to us verbally is duplicative of the information.
I understand. And Ms. McGee has every right to ask questions of folks, and I just ask that the questions are responded as quickly as possible, as we would ask any other folks from the administration in responding to questions from council. Ms. McGee?
I asked my two questions.
Thank you. And I'm not always available in person, and so sometimes written communications are only opportunity. But my presence being here and me being prepared with the answers, thank you. This differentiates Councilwoman McGee from-
Mayor, please just respond to the question. Thank you.
Okay, how would you like me to direct it?
To Ms. McGee, who asked the question about who sponsored, and then what your plan is around policy, and when you're going to have drafts from the policies around renting the facilities to council. Those are the questions.
Yes. So, thank you very much. So, this wasn't a rental. This was a mayor, mayoral community outreach event. I know there was some confusion around mayoral community outreach events. And I really wish the council would have reached out with their questions before they zeroed out the balance. We'd be happy to have provided that in the window, but I'm happy to address these now. So, community outreach, among other things, is one of the priorities of our administration. And I believe that we are in agreement that it is important-
Mayor, please just answer the question.
I, I am. I, I'm sorry, it's not a yes or no question, but I'd be happy to keep it germane.
The question is, the question is about who sponsored?
The question was who sponsored it. And so, the mayor's office sponsored it. Let me give you the context that-
We don't, I mean, we don't need the context. That was Ms. McGee's question.
I would like to provide the context, because if it's taken out of context, then it's meaning, meaningless.
Ms. McGee asked the question. I realize there's more context, but that is how we, how it works. We ask questions. If we want more information from Mr. Fox or whomever, they respond. We don't, we don't accept additional context unless we're asking for it.
Did you need clarification on hosting event versus sponsoring event?
No.
No, we just wanted to know who sponsored.
The two questions.
And the policy information about how you plan on moving forward, the policy, making sure that it get implemented as quickly as possible.
So, this doesn't vary from the policy that's been implemented. The city is able to hold events for the purposes of it. So, the purpose of this was in alignment, as we can agree, we, we, we are elected to represent an extremely diverse community. This was not an event for the Asian community. This event was for all of the residents in Warren. We know that by better understanding the diversity of the community-
Mayor, I'm so sorry, but you just have to respond to the question. When is the policy about the DDA and renting the atrium going to be provided to council?
So, those are in the purview of DDA. I'd like to, I would be happy to follow up with DDA on this, but this was not a DDA event. This was a mayoral event.
Understood. Thank you. Ms. McGee, do you have any more questions?
Did you get your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any more questions? Or, I'm sorry, do you have any more questions?
No, not at all.
Thank you. You can have a seat, Mayor. Ms. Moore and then Mr. Boyke. Ms. Moore?
I think there's a little bit of confusion at times, because everyone seems to like to use our logo, the Dawn logo, from the dentist that says Warren Dentist with the logo, or any event. I, I noticed the, I think the Pride event says Warren Pride. It's confusing. Is it just because it's taking place in Warren, it's called Warren, or is it sponsored? We passed an ordinance a few years ago that any advertisement had to have the disclaimer on it paid for with taxpayer dollars. I don't remember exactly the details of that. But maybe perhaps when there are advertisements for whatever events the city's put on, there be, this is, this is paid for by taxpayer dollars, or this is an event, this is paid for the nonprofit of whatever group that's having that. Because I think people are confused, and they think some people are getting things that they're not getting, and that's what brought up the problem sort of with the atrium. Certain people got to have events there that weren't, you know, it wasn't inner, you know, our city, the mayor or council doing something.
Mr. Vanderlinen, can you please, please be quiet? We're, we're hearing the conversation up here. Thank you.
And, and I, I think that that, that unfairness is what raised a lot of the question, questions that people have. I don't think any of us are against, if a group wants to have an event and pay for it or whatever. I think there, there has to be some limitation on how many festivals and celebrations the city can afford. We're having trouble with, you know, we had a, a budget that we had to work very hard trying to get the numbers down and balancing it, we're going to be facing, and, you know, we have to be very judicious in how we spend our money. And we can't, as much as we would love to have a celebration for everybody, we can't. We don't have the money to do that. And, you know, I guess the mayor can just pick and choose who she wants to do, but I would have liked to have seen if the mayor's office was going to sponsor something or host something, that it was, would have been in that budget of, so we would know that that's, you know, what, what the intention was. Because it was, there were outreach numbers put in, you know, different pots, and without specifics and details of what those were, we didn't feel comfortable approving them. So, I think going forward, we have to have delineated in the budget, okay, outreach, this is what we plan for the next year, this festival, this one, this one, so we know where their monies are going. And, you know, to be fair, I suppose people should be able to say, you know, have a lottery, who gets a celebration this year, that year, just to make it fair. So, I, I think that's a, a little bit of the problem, and I think the transparency, it needs to be a little bit better, so people know who's paying what, who's sponsoring it. Is, is the Parks and Rec sponsoring it? A lot of times when Parks and Rec do sponsor something, they have outside vendors, Hamilton Chevrolet, or lots of people that have been very generous over the years for the Birthday Bash, things like that. So, I think just if, if we're just to do a better job of communicating, I think it would alleviate a lot of the concerns from residents and, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boyke?
Just to my point, I was against the mayor being asked questions. You can't pick who you're going to let ask the mayor questions. I was shut down in the budget meeting when I wanted to address the mayor. Tough questions, and you shut me down. I respected the chair, and I moved on. And I think it's totally unfair. You can't pick what you want to let, what council members you want. I was elected to represent the people, ask tough questions, and financial responsibility, you know. And if we don't ask the tough questions, we don't get answers. And I have not, no problems with the councilmen asking the mayor the questions, but you're not fair. And I want that, at that point across. Whether, if I disrespected the mayor, then that's, you could reprimand me, you know. But to shut me down and tell me not to ask questions, because what you perceived, what I was going to ask is wrong. And I'll yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Boyke. And I apologize. I would never want to shut you down. The instance in which I think we're disputing is that there was a back and forth argument, back and forth. And you are 100% correct. I take accountability as a leader. You should always have the floor and be able to ask the tough questions. So, that is my, my-
Madam President?
Mr. Noonan.
Councilman Boyke, did you want to ask the mayor questions at this time? I thought that you just wanted her, wanted to not ask her questions, so I didn't understand that.
I wanted to ask her questions. Is that the budget? But I was, I was told I couldn't go any further. But I said here was Councilman Lafferty proposed a list of questions.
Right.
And those questions could be answered by the administration.
Right.
Same questions that the councilman asked.
And we still expect them to.
Correct.
Absolutely. Excellent. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Lafferty?
Thank you. A, a follow-up to the questions on our calendar of pending matters, we have, that was a request, that was initially requested on the 10th of September, renewed on the 12th of November. And that is for an ordinance regulating the use of the city seal, logo, insignia, and updates, update request to be even a, okay, it was, and then there were further updates requesting a draft of said ordinance. As part of that item, in the, in the initial discussion in September, I also asked for a style guide. I asked for specific rules around the use of our, of our logos, and so that items like this, when the city seal and the City of Warren appears on something, that it is done correctly and lawfully. We have an ordinance. Mr. Schroder was looking this up. Section 2-4 requires disclaimers. No such disclaimers were, were present on these, on these flyers. They weren't included on the text messaging. And so, we have, again, outstanding concerns, and that is the reason I brought this up. We continue, the city administration continues to make missteps with regard to these events and the gray area that these policies suffer from. That is why I'm bringing this back up and will continue to until this issue is resolved. These, these matters are important. We've ran into a serious issue last summer. I do not care to repeat that. And without the black and white, Mr. Schroder lives in black and white with the law each and every day. If there was gray area, I suppose you wouldn't have a job. But that's, that's for the judge to decide. But that is, that is the purpose for this item. It's not to grill the mayor. It's to ensure that we are holding the administration accountable under her leadership. And when there are missteps, that's up to us to ensure that those are accounted for.
Madam President?
Mr. Noonan?
Councilman Lafferty, would you mind just refreshing me on what the due dates were for those items, since I think they've passed?
Per the, Madam Chair, per the ordinance request, the due date was the 21st of November, 2024.
That was for the logos. And the style guide?
That was for the ordinance. The style guide, I understood Mr. Mazarelli spoke to me at that time that there would be, you know, that would take some considerable development. I understood that at the time, and so, looking forward, you know, perhaps an update as part of that. It's already been requested, and so renewal of my request from those council dates can be, can be provided.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr., you, Mr. Lafferty, can you restate your motion?
Madam Chair, I have one more comment. It's, it's, it's kind of on the same topic, but I noticed in the water bill, there was an advertisement for Centerline, for something in Centerline. And I'm not sure that we should be putting advertisements for Centerline events in our water bills. It really should be kept for city events and city, and not for other businesses and things like that. I have a question whether we should be using it at all, but I think we should be careful about who we advertise for and, you know, not, and we, we saw it before with one Fish Fry Church would be in the flyer and not another one, and things like that. So, just a comment.
Thank you. Mr. Lafferty, could you restate your motion?
Of course. And that would be 12C. I will move that the administration provide answers to the questions asked during item 12C at the city council meeting held May 20th, 2025.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, you made the motion, and Mr. Lafferty supporting-
And, and all, including all related exhibits.
Thank you. I will call the question, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is yes. Motion carries, next item.
Next item is the.
Gentlemen, you're, please, you're out of order. We can hear you very well up here, and it's very distracting, and we're just trying to make sure we get through the meeting and do so properly. If you please could just be respectful, it would be very much appreciated. Ms. Moore.
Next item is 12D, City of Warren and Urban Seed Community Garden Lease. I will make a motion to approve.
Support the discussion.
Mrs. Rogan C's item?
Support Dwyer. Mr. Lafferty, can I have discussion first?
Of course.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. So this, and I apologize, this is coming to everybody at the table, this is for a short-term lease, a one-year lease, to pilot this particular endeavor, which is an agreement with an organization called Urban Seed. Urban Seed has a community garden in East Point, where they have a very successful model and work collaboratively with the city of East Point. They grow produce and give it away to neighbors to help in the community, to help with food insecurity. They asked for my help on trying to secure some vacant property, I think probably in December or November of January, in the winter of sometime this past year. And we've been working with the administration, a number of departments, Mr. Schroder, to bring this lease to you. And why we're adding it to the table today is because it is growing season, and we don't have a meeting for another three weeks, and without a lease, they can't start their work on the property. So they are looking at taking a vacant piece of property the city currently owns, growing produce, and treating it as a community garden, and giving that produce away to neighbors in the south end of the city.
Madam President, while I find this admirable.
Mr. Lafferty is next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, after me.
I just like a copy, is all I'm saying.
It is in your email. Yep.
I haven't been able to find it.
I will give you my copy in a moment.
We have an extra, there's an extra copy.
Thank you.
So there's a number of items I wanted to point out, but I will turn, I will let Mr. Lafferty, before I point out some of the changes I think are necessary, I will let Mr. Lafferty discuss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, Mr. Schroder, you participated in the review with Ms. Michaels? Okay. And so, the questions I have, the copy provided to me, exhibit A is blank.
Mr. Schroder can speak to that?
Yep. That's just the description of the property, so I believe that the address is at the top of the lease.
It is.
Okay. And exhibit A will just, it's just a description of the property, which is already in the recital, so it will just be a repeat of what you see there. And my understanding is that the community organization really only wants the 13690 Topher property.
Correct.
And that would be it, that the rest of the properties would not be subject to this lease. And Ms. Michaels is shaking her head, but, I mean, that's what.
So the understanding from Urban Seed was that the, taking on the additional properties would be more challenging, that an acre of property would be a reasonable amount of property to be taking and gardening this season? Do you have a concern, Ms. Michaels? Sorry, Mr. Lafferty, I've hijacked your time.
That's why I was questioning exhibit A, what are the properties in question?
Ms. Michaels.
Counsel, Laura Sullivan from my office worked on the lease, and my understanding after talking to her is that she expected another meeting before final terms were worked out, because what was originally discussed isn't in the final draft. I guess the organization can't agree to everything. So there are some terms that still have to be worked out, logistics. And I'm just hoping that maybe there could be one meeting, and if there's a special meeting of council, add it at that time to the agenda.
So Ms. Michaels, just to clarify, what is in here, the group is agreeing to. It's not necessarily the terms that they would love, but they're agreeing to the terms.
The original terms, the ones that were produced by Laura?
The draft that Mr. Schroder, that you all drafted today, or that you sent over today?
I believe the draft, the original draft that Laura Sullivan prepared, it are the terms that I believe the public service director and the administration could agree to. They're not, the terms in the current agreement are not terms that are acceptable, that could be, that could work for the administration. There are too many concerns. I think it's a matter of just working them out at one meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Michaels, is there one example that are not, they're not acceptable?
One is the shed. The city cannot agree to a shed. Another one is signs.
That was taken out. That was taken out.
Signs were taken out too.
Yes, shed and signs were taken out.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Ms. Michaels, Ms. Sullivan did a red line of that agreement late this afternoon. She struck the shed. We heard from Mr. Mazzarelli about the shed, he was absolutely right. We struck the sign language out, and so we accepted all her final changes, sent it back to council. Apparently the group is agreeing, agreeing to this. So we did relent on the shed and the signage.
Okay. It's not, Mr., one request, one request if I may, Madam Chair, if the final, if it is approved, that it just be, that it meet the satisfaction of the public service director?
He already.
Just to make sure he is on board with all of the final terms, because I'm not aware whether he is or not.
Mr. Schroder.
The public service director did take a pass at that this afternoon, that was why the shed language was removed, that is why the signage language was removed. He also approved the language with respect to water service and providing a monthly water bill to the, to the organization. So I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
So I would, I would recommend to council that we do add that stipulation, because I believe that the public service director was on board, and if not, I would state that we could work that out by Friday before the reconsideration, okay? That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lafferty, I apologize, you, your floor.
All right. So beyond, beyond exhibit A, thank you for that item, but you're, what you're suggesting is that we are only talking about 13690 Topher. All right. And I just got a text message, the water hookup might have to be on the other parcel. That could be a potential problem.
From Mr. Mazzarelli?
Yes, I'm sorry, from Mr. Mazzarelli, that their, the water hookup might have to be on the other parcel. So if we are striking one property from this agreement tonight, and we're essentially cutting off their water supply.
It's a vacant property.
Oh, understood, yeah. But that, let me, let me continue here, I've only got a couple of minor concerns. We have, many of the different recitals here are about the lessie. The lessor does not seem to have any responsibilities in the, in the agreement. There are a number of items that, you know, give us protections, termination, insurance, all of those, those items, indemnifications, those are all covered, as, as expected, Ms. Michaels. The, the issue that I have is that it doesn't seem that the city has any other responsibilities for this property, and I ask that because exhibit B, we're talking about design and appearance, so under 3G, the lessie must maintain a tidy appearance on the properties, which includes mowing the lawn, removing plants and leaves, so on and so forth. But exhibit B, item 12 prohibits any structures of any kind, so my question is, where are the tools, the lawnmower, the weed whippers, where are all of those tools going to be stored if there's no shed on the property?
I mean, Representative from Urban Seed's here to talk, but what I know about the project is that they will bring them all in, because they're not able to keep a shed there. They all live in the area, and so they will bring all of those items over. They would prefer not to have to do that, clearly, as you are a gardener yourself, Mr. Lafferty.
I am.
But that is the concession they're willing to make in order to move this project forward.
Okay. The, so that's, that's not indicating then, that's, kind of goes back to where I was saying, the lesser responsibilities, is they still cutting the grass? Because we're not allowing them to mow the, you know, we're not allowing them storage space, so that, that does hold, then?
Yes, they're going to have to bring in a mower or a weed whip every week and mow the lawn. We asked that the city do it, but I don't think Mr. Mazzarelli was supportive of that. So that is not ideal, but that is the concession they're willing to make if that is what we need in order to move it forward.
Okay. Mr. Schroder, I did have one concern about design and appearance. The, the last sentence, if lessie is unable to tend to the properties for any period of two weeks, this lease will be deemed revoked. I was wondering, would it be prudent to have, that they have to maintain per city standards, property maintenance standards, and cite the ordinance?
I believe this, they have to follow all city ordinances, is later in the agreement, that they, they are to comply with all ordinances. That's just if they abandon the property.
Okay.
That's for if they abandon this project.
Different purpose.
That the city can take it back. So it's like a two-week period.
Yes.
So, you know, as things grow in the summer, giving them a longer period of time would probably have things out of control. We don't expect that to happen, but.
Of course, of course.
That was Ms. Sullivan's language, so.
Okay. And then I'll move down to page three, under section four, prohibited activities. First of all, the section itself, if, why do we have prohibited activities under number four, and then have exhibit B, which is rules and additional prohibited activities? I, so, Mr. Schroder, if, if we're going to make an amendment to this, what I'd like to see is either all of the prohibited activities be part of one exhibit, and the reason I ask that, prohibited activity, section four, item C, bringing emotional support animals on the property. And then that is in conflict with exhibit B, item 13, which states, allow dog, cats, or other animals within the confines of the properties, except service animals as provided for in the ADA. So we have a, we have a conflict there in the language. So, and that's part and parcel of the reason I wanted to bring these two together. If you bring both sections together, you're going to rule out that we have any conflicts within the two prohibitions, within the two sections for prohibitions. Otherwise, I'm, I'm amenable to the, the agreement. I would like to truly understand if both properties are needed. It would appear the administration suggests that they are for water hookup, or that we grant them the ability to run a hose from the other property, even though they're not using it. I don't think we need to lease them the property just for water use. Is that, water use going to be metered?
Yes.
Okay. And where is, so if it's going to be metered, where is, this should be added to the section?
I added that language to it. Water, there are no results for the word water.
So perhaps it's, yeah, because if we're, if we're leasing them, I expect them to pay a water bill. I have to pay a water bill for my garden, and I support them, but they have to, they have to pay their water bill.
Are you giving free stuff away at your house?
I, I, I give away tomatoes, I give away cucumbers, we have lots of, lots of foods that we typically give away to the neighbors. Hosta plants, if you want hosta plant, oh, but those are, those are the items that I have an issue with.
Madam Chair, Mr. Noonan's first, then Ms. Moore. Mr. Noonan, did you have any questions?
All right.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to say.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
What is a shed?
Sorry, Mr. Lafferty.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Schroder just provided me what it looks like, he added, but it was probably taken out, under costs, item K. The city of Warren will provide a metered watered service connection to the property, and the lessie is responsible for paying the monthly water service charges as invoiced by the city of Warren Water Department. I don't know why that would have been taken out. So that, another concern.
Maybe that was because the city doesn't want to provide it, they have to do their own, I don't know.
Mr. Mazzarelli had agreed in a meeting that he would turn on, Ms. Michaels, the meter, turn on the meter and waive the fee, is that accurate language? Ms. Michaels? Yeah, from the discussion that we had, that's what he said?
Madam Chair, I'll yield for the moment.
So couldn't they just grant an easement to the next property? It's our property, so, we, these people are renting for a year. I mean, I think we're really getting bogged down in unnecessary information. What is the shed? Does that include a portable shed?
We tried a portable.
Or you can't even have a portable shed?
No.
We tried.
Everybody can have a shed, right? If you go. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I'm sure if anybody would like to donate and help this group pay the water bills or anything else, they would take donations, right? We'll share on council Facebook page, you'll get the information to us, and I think this is a great idea. I'm sorry it's taken so long, this seems ridiculous, it's taken so long, and people are buying all their plants now to plant for what they're going to have, and our time's kind of running out in the next couple of weeks, I think. Turn your microphone on, sir. Motion to suspend the rules.
Support Lafferty.
Yeah. The plants that we had originally kind of lined up for that garden don't even exist anymore. As I, as I had passed along to the city, those plants go other places when there's not beds, when people can't speak for them. Those are living things, and they have an expiry date, and if they're not in the ground, then they'll be in the ground somewhere else. So it's, it's, it's a lot of things that we have to get in line now, just because of these delays.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's sad when somebody wants to do something nice for the community and the residents, and you have to meet so many roadblocks, but I guess that's, that's government for you. But thank you for what you're doing, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
The only other adjustment on here is, that I had was under hours of operations. Our parks are sunup to sundown, gardening is not allowed activity, and all these people are volunteers before and after work and on the weekends, so I don't know why we couldn't say from sunup to sundown versus 7:00 AM. Does anyone have any objection to that?
I don't know.
And then the only other thing with this is the, saying it's, the garden is closed in November to April, I don't know why we would do that, they're leasing the property, and gardening continues, they.
They could make pumpkins and.
Yeah, I don't know why we would.
Right?
So those are the, the two adjustments I would make, if folks are amenable to that. I mean, sunup to sundown is much shorter in November, obviously it's like nine to five, but, you know, nevertheless, people prepare for gardening and do gardening all year round, so. Okay, so folks are amenable to that change.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I guess I will restate some of these adjustments. Mr. Lafferty, did you figure out the easement portion?
Madam Chair, the, the question was, Mr. Dwyer had a question between the Topher properties and the Collier properties, noting that the Topher properties are opposite sides of the street, but the Collier properties are adjacent to one another. I can't tell here, based on the mapping, it looks like there's, there may be, I don't have a parcel map to compare it to, but it looks like those two properties are side by side. So if we're, which, Mr. Schroder, which was the, the address that was struck from the agreement? Was it one of the Topher addresses or one of the Collier addresses?
It was the, it was both, the Collier and Topher was in it originally.
All right, so let me, let me. All right, so let me, let me clarify, which, which addresses, Ms. Rogencie, are we granting easement, are we granting?
One three six nine zero Topher.
One three six nine zero Topher?
Mm-hmm.
And that's it? We're not doing anything on-
Correct. They would have loved more, but it's too late in the season to take on more, and we're wanting to set them up for success so that we can continue this great idea.
Okay, so then, the, the question then, if they don't have water hookup or water service on the property, then that item's moot. If there, if there's no water service on the property, they don't have anywhere to get water on that, on one three six nine zero Topher, because the other address is across the street.
Got it.
So there would be nothing to grant easement to.
Got it.
And, or the-
The Collier backs up to it, the water service could be in the Collier, and it backs up to it, they're adjacent.
So running, running water across the-
Do you want to ask Urban Seed what their thoughts are on water?
I, I would be fine. So, to a representative of Urban Seed, can, can you speak to, water is an essential element of this agreement.
Oh, sorry, hold on, try now.
Yeah, absolutely. So the properties, as they stood before, actually back up to each other, so one street and then the other, and then they meet at the back, there's a fence line there. So if we had to, we could figure out a way, if it wasn't going to catch us any flak, if there was a meter there with a spigot, we would hook up to that and water across, across like several hundred feet, but it wouldn't be crossing any roads, it, it's, it's unsurprising, so.
Thank you, sir. So then, Madam Chair, what I would suggest is that we, we must leave one of the properties that provide water service in the agreement, and state as a revision that we're granting easement access only for the purposes of water service to a metered connection.
That's sufficient to me.
Okay.
For a license. For a license.
Or a license, Mr. Schroeder's saying.
However, the attorneys decide to, to word that specifically, I'll leave that up to them.
Okay.
Ms. Moore, is the Collier property the property we bought originally for the library, Mary? Because I think we bought, somebody bought a piece of property, we ended up not using it, because we did own some, I think it's a Collier. Do you remember, Mr. Fox? Yeah, I think that's the, it'd be nice to see that used for something, since we wasted money buying it.
Is there any other discussion items?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Lafferty?
Have we captured everything?
I mean, we can recap, so the address would be one three six nine zero Topher, and, hmm, what's-
And we have to determine which address on Collier has water service.
They're, they're not taking the Colliers.
Understood, but we must include one of the addresses on Collier for water service for lease-
Oh, got it, it's not at the Topher lot, it's the Collier lot.
Correct, for, for utility access.
Got it, okay, I'm following now. So one of the addresses on Collier, and the Topher lot, the additional section D, hours of operation, sunup to sundown, and there's no closure. Mr. Lafferty, yours were combination of exhibit B and prohibited items, is that correct?
It was the, the lesser responsibilities, whatever those may be, if we have to enumerate the, the responsibilities of the city as the lesser, and then the exhibit B, ensuring that exhibit B or all prohibited activities are included in section four, but they have to be in one section, they, I, I don't want prohibited activities and rules in two separate places that potentially conflict with each other in the same agreement.
Understood. I think that is the, all the adjustments.
I think so.
Okay, so, Mr. Uh-huh.
And, and I'm sorry, one more item, that we have a final draft presented to council prior to the expiration of our reconsideration period, that way all of council has an opportunity to look at the final draft.
And Mr. Mazzarelli can take a last pass before reconsideration.
Yes, sign off by public service.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, makers of the motion comfortable with all of those amendments, Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will call the question. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogencie is a yes, motion carries, next item.
Next item.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I, I expect a tomato from the garden.
I hope you visit, if you pay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next item is thirteen A, consideration and adoption of a resolution, amending the ordinance for the City of Warren Capital Improvement Bond Series 2022, second reading, so moved.
Support Lafferty.
Discussion? Hearing and seen, now I will call the question, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Rogencie is a yes, motion carries, next item.
Madam Chair, recess has been requested, motion to go into recess?
Support for recess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ten minutes.
Oh, at the end of today, there was, for sure. Yeah. My thing got, I had that written in there, I don't know how it got made in there, I don't think that was, I think it was a mistake, I didn't know it was taken, I don't think he intentionally picked it up. Of course. Because I have a text with Mazzarelli saying, can you look at that, I sent that to him, you, you approved it, I showed you, I'm like, we have to put that in. Right. I mean, it's kind of a gift to them, we've been providing the service of a water fee, which is, we'll just look past that, because I can pay them other. Yeah. It's almost a pay for the water. But, it's a thing that the president said, which makes sense to me, was given to me, because this thing is never going to get canceled. Years, so. Yeah. Last night was a stinker, but, we didn't have that in the course of, I like to go back with the winning years.
It's her party, yeah.
This is, I know one year they, they went crazy all year long, 2008, 84, 85, that's right, 84 was the year where they had to start that. But they kind of leveled off after, they got, they leveled off, that's all they needed.
Right.
This year is definitely when it starts, probably initially.
You gotta be healthy in playoffs, suppose it is, and momentum going into it.
Momentum, yeah.
And they had that last year.
Okay, we ready? We're back on. Next item. Next item is two, which was table five thirteen, twenty twenty five, notice of appointment of Wilbert McAdams as fire commissioner and Orrin Ferguson as fire chief. Motion to remove from the table.
Support to remove from the table.
All in favor to remove from the table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item's removed.
Madam Chair, I would like to separate these items if I could. And deal with the appointment of Wilbert, affectionately known as Skip McAdams. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to receive and file. We don't have to affirmatively confirm Commissioner McAdams' appointment. I would mention that earlier today, last couple of days.
Support, support, someone?
Support to bifurcate the items.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
And motion to receive and file thirteen B one.
Okay.
For Mr. McAdams.
Discussion, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. So, under the current terms of the charter, it is not permissible for an appointed officer of the city. Would you explain it, Mr. Schroeder, the legal, the charter? Why am I doing that? And then I'll finish.
In nineteen fifty seven, the voters of Warren approved the city charter, and it has a provision related to nepotism. The charter says that no two employees, including administrative officers, within a certain degree of consanguinity can serve in the same department. So, if you have a father and a son, a mother and a daughter, they are not allowed to serve in the same department under the city charter. This was tested by the courts in the Michigan Court of Appeals, which reviewed this a while ago, it's still good law, that at the time, it was two members of the Public Service Department that were related, and the person applying for the job was not allowed to take the job. They had to find a job in another department because of two related persons in the same department. And the Court of Appeals wrote a very short but instructive legal opinion in that case, where they said that the public policy behind this is supported, it was constitutional. They challenged the constitutionality of this. And the court said, no, this is constitutional because it's trying to prevent issues with, you know, if my own son or daughter were in the department or my father, that leads to favoritism and other problems that can grow from that. And at the same time, the court struck down the city of centerline nepotism, saying it was unconstitutional, because it said you can't serve anywhere in the city if you have a relative anywhere. And they said that was overbroad. They said the Warren Charter was very narrowly tailored to be a interdepartmental nepotism rule. It was upheld, it was legal, and it was proper. And the public policy behind it was, was good, according to the Michigan Court of Appeals. That has stood since nineteen eighty-two. So, that being said, it's also important to know that there's a long history in the, you know, police and fire where you do hear of brothers and fathers and sons somehow serving in the same department. Well, how does this happen? This happens because the collective bargaining process, our, our state laws allowing for union collective bargaining allow that charter to be sidestepped from time to time. And that applies to those who are in that collective bargaining unit, in that unit, not necessarily to the person who's not in the department, the bargaining unit, who's the department head. So, there is some complex interacting statutes here. So, that's sort of the background, is that what you were looking for?
Correct, correct. Just explain that, the collective bargaining. Now, in Mr., in Commissioner McAdams' case, he's not a member of a bargaining unit. And so, that same, the, that protection would not apply to him, but it does apply to your son. We're allowed to hire, and the union language as it sits now, says that regardless of whether Mr., or Commissioner McAdams is the commissioner of the department, nonetheless, the department could hire his son. But the charter then states, the son stays, the commissioner goes. And now, the son has union protection. Today, an agreement was signed between the union and the city that, and I believe the intent of the nepotism clause is so that there's no favoritism given to relatives and, you know, on vacations or, you know, things like that. So, the agreement is that Mr. Mc, Commissioner McAdams will not be dealing with personal, personnel issues with his son, or if he has another family member that comes in, or, I don't know if you have any more in the pipeline that want to be firefighters? No? No? So, that was taken care of today. I do have to say, nobody's perfect. Commissioner McAdams isn't perfect as a fire commissioner. I'm not perfect as a councilperson, none of us are perfect. But I do have to say that when your appointment came over, and, and I, you know, I hear a lot, you know, I go to the stations, I have a pretty good relationship with the fire, fire department. And they were all very supportive of you being appointed. And I knew that, and I, you know, tried to work on a path forward that we could make that happen. And I do have to say, of course, we suffered a tragedy last year. And what I saw from you was truly impressive. The kindness and the compassion that you showed everybody in the department. And I think everybody saw you in, not they ever saw you in a bad light, but I think there's this elevated light that everybody, that went on, and they saw that in you. And they, and me too. And I truly, truly appreciated that. I talked to you during that time. And so, I, I appreciate that. I know the guys, I can say guys still? When's, when's the female coming? Oh, I'm gonna have to get used to saying men and women. But they appreciate that. I, Skip, I know you have a really, really good heart. And I've seen that especially over the last year. So, and not one person has come out to me in the last couple of weeks saying that, no, please vote no, don't, don't put, continue to have Commissioner McAdams in this position. So, I just want you to know that. And I'm in full support. We just receive and file, we don't have to confirm, but we can deny if we have cause. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lafferty and then Mr. Noonan.
Relative to the agreement that Ms. Moore is referring to, I'd like to amend our motion to receive and file to include ratification of the letter of agreement as adopted today by, it would be appropriate to say by the union, by the?
Local thirteen eighty-three.
Local thirteen eighty-three.
You and Ms. Moore are the makers of the motion. Are you?
I'm still.
Hold on one second. Comfortable with the, that addition?
Oh, sure. And has everybody signed that agreement at this point? I think so, right? We just have to approve it? I think so. I think it's all signed. Right? Pardon me? Okay. I know that the union signed.
Has the administration signed?
Oh, I don't know, we can't do this if it's not signed. We'll have to deny.
Ms. Michaels, you can come to the podium.
Sorry, sorry. Not aware whether it has been signed by the city yet, but I'll coordinate with our personnel director.
Well, it has to be, it has to be signed by tonight. This is our last opportunity. Because if not, then it's a violation of the charter, and we don't have another choice but to say no. We, by law, we cannot. We would be derelict in our duty if we don't. I mean, I'll sit here all night and wait for it to be signed. Whoever has to sign it. We'll, we'll move this till later in the meeting. I, I'll stay here till three in the morning if we have to, if we can get it signed. I think the union signed it.
Who, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, who has a copy of the, the agreement as ratified by the uni, by thirteen eighty-three?
Jared Mait. Mr. Vanderlinen.
Hello. Hi, counsel. Jared Gage, HR Director. I was provided the LOU right before I came to the Committee of the Whole. The copy I have does not have the local signature on it, but I don't mind signing the agreement. I gave it a read-through, discussed it with Ms. Michaels, and we're both in agreement on signing it. I just need the one that has the copy with the union signature, and I'll go ahead and sign it.
Are you the last signature?
Uh, for the city of Warren.
You're the signature.
Yeah, I can sign it.
Okay, okay.
I just need the one that has the firefighter's signature.
I'm satisfied if I have your representation that you're gonna sign it.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you still have the floor, Mr. Lafferty?
I'm, I, I take Mr. Gage as had his word that the agreement will be signed. This, this should have been addressed prior to our meeting. This, this should have been signed and prepared for, for council to dispose tonight. So, I'm, I'm not pleased with that. I don't have an issue with, with this appointment. Mr. McAdams, Commissioner, we have known each other for going on just over six years now. I've always known you to be a man of good character and appreciate everything you've done for the department. And echo the same sentiments that Ms. Moore offered earlier. Look forward to seeing your leadership continue with the city. Thank you for your service to our city and our ci, and our citizens. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Noonan.
I just want to say that I understand that this means that when the council votes in favor that, as I expect we're about to, that we'll be affirming your appointment, Skip. And, and thank you so much for your long years of service and your forbearance with all the questions around at this time of, of the year and, and everything. So, that's, that's correct, right? We'll be affirming his appointment.
We're going to receive and file?
Receive and file, which is, which we're not denying.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Would that receive and file include all others that, if there's other commissions that come about, would they, if they decide to hire a relative or, or a son or daughter, would that include them also? So, it's just one particular commissioner that will be, his son would be under that bargaining agreement? Or we have other commissioners that may be appointed? With their sons, would they go by that same charter?
By the same charter? Everybody goes by the same charter. Everybody follows the charter. What we are making an agreement in, we're making an agreement to outside of the charter at this point as part of the collective bargaining agreement. It's a letter of understanding that'll be attached to that. It, that would not be appropriate for any other, it would not be appropriate for anybody else. This is a one-time.
So, moving forward, were other commissioners that are appointed by the mayor and the city council approved, will they be held responsible under that charter?
Under the charter?
If they decided to hire their son?
Everybody is held under the-
In the bargaining agreement?
Everybody, no. Everybody is held under the charter. They wouldn't get, have the same agreement. This is a personal agreement. This is, go ahead.
I think I understand what you're asking, Councilwoman. Any future fire commissioner, fire commissioner would be subject to this agreement, meaning that this particular provision, and for years it didn't, this nepotism provision doesn't apply to the fire department, but only because of this letter of agreement that the commissioner cannot have direct supervisory control of a family member at any time during this agreement. And that includes promotional decisions, discipline, scheduling, other decisions where favoritism could play a role. But this would apply to a future fire commissioner the way it's written now. However, during the next collective bargaining agreement round, this could be changed at that time, too. But we were put in a situation where the, the son was hired and the commissioner was there, and then the, some changes were made, and they were left without any protection in the collective bargaining agreement for this. So, Councilwoman Moore wanted to correct that, Council Secretary. So, this does that. This is legal and proper. This isn't anything that's not proper in a way to get around the charter, so to speak. We don't like to get around the charter because it's our constitution here in the city. But for decades, this is a very pro-labor state, a very pro-labor city. And collective bargaining agreements by law can be used to get around charter provisions, for lack of a better way of putting it. But it's a legal, proper way to do it. But we're addressing a problem here, which is the favoritism, which is why we have the rule. To just say, go ahead, Commissioner, hire all your children, because we put it in the collective bargaining agreement, doesn't really do justice to the charter, which is trying to prevent the favoritism.
Yeah, but my concern is, in the future, if something like this happened, it may or may not be in the bargaining agreement, and then we did it for one person, commissioner of the fire department, it seems discriminatory. So, if you say you're gonna do this, let's move forward in doing it, making sure that we can do it in the future of what happens. So, you just say this is one personal time, but it happened on before where we had commissioners that hired relatives.
And I, I agreed with what you're saying, and then I talked to the labor attorneys for the city and talked to people in police and fire. And you go back decades, we'll go back a century, there, there's a lot of families who get into this business of police and fire, public service. And in some of the larger departments, you're gonna have a circumstance where you might have two brothers serving in the same department, not even under the same supervisors. That would technically violate the charter. So, so it's something specific to public service at this time, or, excuse me, public safety. I shouldn't say public, public safety. So, and at this time, it only applies to the fire department, but I don't disagree with your concerns.
Any other discussion or questions? Ms. McGee?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I will call the question, this is a motion to receive and file. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan, C is yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Congratulations, I guess.
Madam Chair. Would like just to add that the signed agreement to be provided to council prior to Friday.
Signed agreement provided to council, getting a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is notice of appointment of Orrin Ferguson as fire chief. Madam Chair.
Ms. Moore.
I'm gonna make a motion to receive and file for a minute.
Support to receive and file.
Discussion. I have been contacted by many members of the fire department in the last, you know, couple of weeks, but have been told about incidents for several years now. We did have a committee meeting of the whole where we asked Chief Ferguson some questions. And there are, there was a live broadcast of that meeting, and apparently, they've been watching at some of the, some of the fire stations. And I've gotten texts that some of the information given was not correct. My colleagues have asked me if you would be willing to take an oath that everything you said in the committee meeting of the whole was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And then, we would have a, an investigation to confirm and make sure that all of those, any of the allegations that are brought forward are with or without merit. Sure, if he wants to answer that.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Support.
Can I talk to Mrs. Michaels before I make a decision?
Is she your attorney? Sure.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Apologize to everyone, I, the new microphone is picking up a lot of sound from the first row, so I keep turning it off. So, apologies. Carrie, Carrie Anne.
So, can you repeat the, the statement again, please?
Would you be willing to take an oath and swear that what you said to council in the committee meeting of the whole was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And that we would convene an investigation to investigate the claims? Because I am getting reports from people that some of the things said were not correct. And I want to give you the opportunity to say absolutely you would swear to that, that those things you said were true.
You cannot, excuse me, Mr. Vanderlinen, please be quiet. Mayor, you cannot yell from the, the audience.
No.
No.
And, and I will, I will state that Council Secretary does have subpoena power if, but there was not time for us to meet and for the council to grant subpoena power to me to undergo all of the, to undergo an investigation. I tried to have it done by the mayor's office. I suggested that they pull the appointment to give us more time. I didn't hear back. I contacted the Chief of Staff, and I never heard back.
Our charter, council has had the requisite amount of time.
Okay, if you thought it was enough time, but you don't have a right to speak right now.
Mayor, you, we, this is not proper protocol. You are, you have to abide by the rules of council. Chief Ferguson came up, we, no one asked you to come up to the podium and to speak. Mayor Stone, please sit down. Please sit down.
I don't think we want to talk about how much time people take to make decisions around here.
Okay. Can we please, excuse me, everyone in the audience, I need everyone to level set here. This is a professional business meeting. We are giving, Mr. Bell, this is a professional business meeting.
Madam Chair, I, I worked very hard and to make, to figure out a way to approve, to be able to prove and go forward with Commissioner McAdams. That took time, and we haven't had very much time. If you think a week, you know, all of us were very busy doing a budget, and this was put on, on the budget night, we didn't have time to investigate that. I didn't have time to send out subpoenas or to call the police. I did talk to the police today. I've talked to police officers about certain things today, and I know how to go about getting the information that I, I need. But the question is, as I said, would you be willing to take an oath? I'm, I am, I'm a officer of the court, I'm allowed to administer an oath, and would you be willing to take an oath that what you told council was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing, under penalty of perjury?
I am willing to, to take that oath, yes.
Okay.
But I am not willing to go through an investigation.
Then I withdraw the offer, and my motion will be to deny.
Thank you.
Okay, based on, based on information, I'm concerned that so many firefighters have come forward with information, with their concern and about your leadership, and many of these issues that were brought forward to me, I didn't make them up. I don't live in the station every day, and it was especially surprising to me because nobody said any, one thing against Commissioner McAdams, and some of the, I was disturbed that there were certain things that you, you claimed no knowledge of. And I think that whether the allegations I have behind that, that I didn't go into were true or not, the fact that you didn't know, I see, I think that you should know. And many of those issues I asked, I think you should know. So, that, my emotion, I prob, there's probably not enough votes here, nobody has the information I do. I didn't share it in the committee meeting. I was very careful to ask you questions and not make unfounded allegations. I just shared what I've been told, and I didn't have evidence with me. I do have some, but I did not share it there. But I, my motion is to deny, and I'm probably gonna be the only one, I don't know, but my motion is deny, deny that you're not willing to undergo an investigation into those matters.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Is there su- support for Ms. Moore's motion?
Madam President, I will support with discussion.
Support Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, we've had many conversations. We've spoken on a number of different topics. The information that has also been shared with me was concerning. You answered those questions in the public forum when you had the opportunity to have a closed session with council, as was, as was your right, and you chose to have that meeting in public for everyone to hear. And I can't imagine how hard that was for you, and I respect you for that. But your answer to Ms. Moore is what is most concerning. If I was being accused and everything that I said, Madam President-
Ms., Mayor, you cannot come up to the podium. It is not-
Madam President-
Please, please have a seat, Mayor. Thank you.
I will make a motion to adjourn if the mayor gets up again.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lafferty.
Mr. Ferguson, I'll continue. Your, your unwillingness to cooperate with an investigation that would help clear your name, if everything you said to us this, this evening at the committee of the whole was the truth, your unwillingness to cooperate, we'll call that into question. I would want an investigation. I would want to be able to clear my name, and that statement, Ms. Moore, a few moments ago, gives me pause. Hence, my decision to support a motion to deny in this case. Madam Chair?
Yep. Thank you. Mr., Ms. McGee, and then Mr. Noonan.
Thank you. I am not in support of denying. I want to vote on this today. I appreciate what you have said, Councilman Lafferty and Secretary Mindy, but I am not about denying. I want to vote today, and I want to vote on whether or not we all accept his appointment on today. If you have any allegations or any investigation that needs to be done, let it be done after our vote. You're not speaking for all of us. You're not speaking, the seven of us, we gotta vote. I prefer that we vote today.
Madam Chair, we have to vote today. And I never said we weren't.
Well, I'm not, I'm not denying. If you wanna do investigation, do your investigation after we vote. Yes or no?
Well, I, we are gonna vote once we got the answer, and I'm, that's not acceptable to me, so I'm-
Mr. Noonan?
Sure. Jeff, would you mind explaining the difference between perjury and a, and the, just, if, if someone were to, say, lie to an elected body, such as at the council of the whole meeting that we just had, that's still an offense that would be terminable, as I recall you said. Correct? Could you explain that to us, please?
If somebody who's an employee or a high-ranking official appears before the council, the legislative body that has oversight, and then makes misrepresentations, that is certainly a determinable offense, you know, to, to lie about things relevant to your employment or job or allegations of wrongdoing, when it happened, when it didn't, I, of course, that's not necessarily perjury, because the subject in this case did not take an oath before offering statements. It wasn't testimony, it was statements. So, if you wanted to say you committed perjury, if it's later determined that those were false statements, it wouldn't be perjury. However, if the subject were to take an oath and swear and stand by those statements, in that context, being a city officer in front of the legislative body, that could possibly, that could constitute perjury if those are false statements, okay? So, I think that's the difference between, you know, saying things that are untrue when you're being asked questions that are very material to your job, maybe violation of rules, which is what I heard the allegations were. So, that's the difference between something that's terminable, but the council, after today, the council would not be able to terminate, the council has no ability to terminate this individual after today at all. In fact, if the council terminates right now, the mayor could reappoint.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, or actually, they could go back to City Hall right now, and she could file another appointment letter, and his employment would continue, but that's the last one. That's, that's, that's the last one this year, and then he would come back to council again for two more meetings. So, that's the way the charter was written. So, again, back in 1957, and this is, this is, these are the rules we have in our charter. So, does that answer your question?
So, to reiterate, the offense would be something for which someone could be terminated from their job, and any option, for instance, if Mr. Ferguson declined the appointment, he can still be investigated, that, we can still subpoena people to testify as to the veracity of what he said or didn't say.
There's no doubt, Councilman, that regardless of what happens here tonight, regardless of this vote, that the council could convene an independent investigation of these matters. There's no doubt. The council has that ability, whether the subject is confirmed for the appointment or not, or, or continues or not, that council has that ability to investigate the matter if it so chooses, but it would have to probably be an independent investigation, and we would have to discuss how that would proceed.
Okay. It, it just seems it would be, if it was something where, if Mr. Ferguson declined the appointment, the council might decide not to take further action, perhaps, and I don't know. Is that a decision that should, we should be, we should be making at this time as to how we would proceed?
Well, I guess that's up to council. I wouldn't want to tell council yes or no on that, yeah.
Is that an option that we could do, or is it out of line of me to suggest?
It's an option to investigate, it's an option to not investigate. That's, that's the decision of the body. Someone would have to bring forth a motion or a proposal for an investigation. Certainly, there's subpoena power in the charter. There's also maybe an auditor or the police department or another investigator who would get involved. There's plenty of ways to go about an investigation. The council is equipped by charter to do such a thing, and, but again, you know, it's up to the body.
Okay. Well, I was wondering if I could ask Mr. Ferguson whether he'd be willing to decline the appointment based on the possibility of not having to go through, the possibility of the council possibly not investigating him further and the embarrassment that that might cause? Is, is, can I, can I ask him?
Well, I mean, I, you know, certainly you can, through the chair, if the rules are proper, I would defer to the chair on that.
Okay. It doesn't mean that the council's going to take him up on it, I just want to know if he's interested in that. May I, may I ask him? Orrin, would you mind approaching the microphone for me, please? You, you didn't want to be investigated. A po, better possibility for not being investigated at this point would probably be to decline the appointment. I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
I am not declining.
Okay, okay, hey, great. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just wanted to offer that possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I yield.
Thank you. I will call Mr. Boyke, and then I'm gonna call the question.
Madam Chair, to the chair, to Mr. Schroder. Let's say we confirm him today, and the council votes for the investigation, like you said, and the conclusion of the investigation finds, one, multiple violations. What recourse do we have after that?
Well, the recourse the council would have would be to not terminate the subject, because that would be, only the mayor could terminate the subject at that point, Mr. Ferguson, Chief Ferguson. That would be the mayor's purview only. The council could request formally for a termination if there were an issue, but council would have no power to do so.
Can we go to circuit court on that?
Only if the investigation revealed charter violations or something of that nature, and, I mean, it's a possibility, but I, I highly doubt that unless there's something charter-related, which, from what I heard, there were allegations of rule violations, procedure violations, misuse of department resources, and those type of things. I'm, I don't believe the council would be able to go to court to terminate that employment. It would be the mayor's purview.
So, you just answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion to deny on the table, so a yes is to deny, a no is not to deny. I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
No.
Mr. Lafferty?
Don't deny.
Yes.
Yes to deny.
Yes to deny.
Yes to deny.
Okay.
Mr. Lafferty?
Based on the unwillingness to undergo an investigation.
Are you, yes or no?
Yes to deny, based on the unwillingness to cooperate with an investigation.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
No to deny.
Mr. Noonan?
No to deny.
Ms. McGee?
No to deny.
No to deny.
Rogan C. is a no. We'll entertain a new motion, if anyone has one.
There is no, no, there is no new motion.
Motion to-
If that failed, so it's an automatic.
Oh, it's just automatic?
We don't approve.
Okay. Okay, next item.
I'm, I'm not understanding.
So, the, we, we vote, thank you, the appointment stands. Thank you, Ms. Camp. Next item.
Next item is 13C, which was tabled 5/13/2025. Proposed resolution providing public notice of intent to sell vacant tax-reverted property at 20803 Wellington, Warren, Michigan, parcel ID number 1336382004 for $1. Subject to combination of 20809 Wellington. Approving sale following 30-day notice period and accepting grant of easement rights. Consideration and adoption of a resolution.
Need to, motion to remove from the table. Hearing none. Okay, hearing none. The item stays on the table.
Next item is 13D, request of the fire department for a transfer of funds between line items in the amount of $870,000 to provide sufficient funds in several accounts within the general fund for the remainder of the 2025 fiscal year. Consideration and adoption of a resolution. Motion to approve with discussion.
Support, Lafferty.
Discussion, Ms. Moore.
Yep, thank you. So, as we went through the budget, we examined last year's expenditures for overtime, and at the time of the budget adoption, we had the overtime for firefighters through December 31st of this, of 2024. This is adding another, if I've got the, if I, am I in the right one, Mr. Lafferty? The 700,000? Yeah, this is the one.
Yes.
Yeah. So, this is adding 700,000 to the firefighter overtime, which brings that to 1. almost $8 million. And in the budget was requested by the mayor, 755,000. The department requested 2,000.
2 million.
2 million. So, council split the difference and budgeted 1.5, which is a little bit closer, but still not enough. We're hoping that they get that overtime amount down. We were not aware of, of this, you know, how much more there was going to be, but this amount, just for six months, is just shy of what the mayor proposed for an entire year. It's just not gonna cut, it's not realistic. You know, I am disappointed in the operations and why the fire department is not working harder to get the overtime down, but they are on notice that we expect them to get that down. All of these appropriations, there's several of them tonight, it's, it's just a normal course of things that come over at this time of year, that we're moving money around to cover things. So, I'm done.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boyke?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Rogan C. is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is 13E, request of the fire department for a transfer of funds between line items in the amount of 1.546, 1,546,200, and an additional appropriation of funds in the amount of $7,700 to provide sufficient funding in several accounts within the general fund for the balance of the fiscal year 2025. Consideration and adoption of a resolution. Motion to approve with discussion.
Support, Dwyer.
Discussion, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Once again, this is adding overtime money in the police. This is adding 1.45 million dollars. What was spent as of December of 2024 was 1.19 million. So, you add this together, and this is, you know, almost 2.6 million dollars. The department asked for 2 million, the mayor asked for a million, we understood that was not reasonable. We did not know how unreasonable it was until tonight, and- And we appropriated one point five million, which probably is not going to cut it. We know they are woefully understaffed. And they're working hard. They've increased revenues to the city, so we appreciate that. But, you know, we're just hoping we have a new HR director, and we have great hopes for him. And he's going to aid the police in improving and expanding our search for adding police officers to our roster. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Thirteen F, request of the police department for an increase in budgeted appropriations in amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars to cover costs associated with providing a status location for the department's drone first responder program. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, so moved.
Support Dwyer.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is thirteen G, request of the property maintenance division for a line item transfer in the amount of twenty-three million to cover additional costs associated with the rea-
No, twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand, I'm sorry, I got an extra zero. Twenty-three thousand to cover additional costs associated with the rehabilitation, I've got budget brain, people, of city-owned property located at fourteen two seventeen East Nine Mile. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, so moved.
Support Lafferty for twenty-three thousand dollars.
Discussion. Mr. Boyke.
To the chair, or Mr. Fox? Or, Mr. Campbell, sorry, I didn't see him back there. Good evening. Ian Newt, Ian Newt.
Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead.
All right, is it on? There we go. Okay. Good evening, Council, Steve Campbell, behalf of Public Service.
I notice two requests here for the same property, one from property managers, one from Public Service. Ian Newt of the Council, what building is this? What's it used for?
Fourteen two one seven Nine Mile, it's a building we're rehabbing to move the property maintenance division down to. Currently, the city owns it, however, there's no, there's no networking at the facility. There's nothing that ties it into the, to the city networks for cameras and computers and phones. So, we need to, in order to upgrade tho- that facility, we need to add these, these features to it.
Excellent. We, we need something on the south end there.
Yes, sir. It's trying to make some room as well. Move the property. It'll be all the property inspectors will be moved down to that location offsite.
Okay, thank you. I'll yield back.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other, sorry, I keep turning on and off the microphone. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Thirteen H, request of the Public Service Department to award building improvements at fourteen two seventeen East Nine Mile to various vendors in a total amount not to exceed one hundred seven thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars one cent. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, so moved.
Support Lafferty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Thirteen I, request of the Public Service Director for an increase in budgeted appropriations in the rental division in the amount of forty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars to cover the costs associated with purchasing Tyler Technologies electronic ticket writing software and handheld printers. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, so moved.
Support Dwyer.
Discussion, anyone? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Thirteen J, request of the Public Service Department to award the purchase of electronic writing software and handheld printers to Tyler Technologies for a five-year period in the amount not to exceed one hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars, with options to renew for five additional one-year periods. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, so moved.
Support Dwyer.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item, request to approve the reappointment of Michael Tyrow to the sidewalk and tree board of appeals for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Motion to approve.
Support Lafferty.
Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Proposed, uh, thirteen L. Proposed resolution to provide public notice of intent to sell tax-reverted property at seventy-two zero three Cadillac and seventy-five seventy-four Meadow, Warren, parcel IDs thirteen thirty-three two zero seven zero three zero and thirteen thirty-three four twenty-eight zero zero nine. Approving sale after thirty-day notice period, accepting grant of easement rights and public utilities. Consideration and adoption of a resolution.
So moved with discussion. Lafferty.
Support.
Support. Discussion. Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. I had a conversation this afternoon with Ms. Michaels, if you could, please. Thank you. The, the context of, of the discussion was the disparity between the assessed value, which is in the letter dated May seventh, from Ms. Gentner, the deputy city assessor, listing these properties, seven two zero three Cadillac for sixty-seven thousand and change, and then seventy-five seventy-four Meadow for sixty thousand, as true, illustrated as, as true cash value. And in conversation with Ms. Michaels, we both agreed that if you drove by the properties, you wouldn't pay sixty thousand dollars for either of these properties. That may be what the home would be worth if it was in very good condition, or good condition. But in the, the condition it's in now, these are not accurate. So, and the reason why I'm, I'm asking, Ms. Michaels, you, you agree that that was the context of our conversation?
Sorry, that is correct. I could elaborate when.
If you would, please.
Following our, following our discussion, I spoke to Tom Bonmerito. And the assessor's perspective is to protect the valuation of the neighborhood. But there's an issue because they have to estimate market value based on current condition. So, we're going to talk, to, talk to the new assessor, see if they could give the valuation of the neighborhood as it would, the property as it would be in the ideal state, and as it currently exists going forward, so it's a more accurate representation of valuation. We cannot afford to get independent appraisals for each tax lot.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm asking for. I, I think our assessor's department is, is completely capable in providing us a fair valuation, but under, with respect to the, the actual conditions of the property. Because what it looks like here is we're going to give a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of property to somebody for a thousand dollars. And that's just not, the, the optic is skewed, based on the data that's being presented to us tonight. That, that is not true.
That is correct, Councilman. Absolutely.
We wouldn't, and, and I'm going to go as far to say, we wouldn't be entertaining this tonight if those properties were worth that much.
If I may, Councilman, Madam Chair, to put this in context, these two homes were rejected by the highest bidder that was awarded to rehab ten homes back in February. The builder rejected four homes. These were two of the homes rejected. So, clearly, the value of the property as it exists today is not reflected in the report from the assessor.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. I forgot to mention that, that tidbit. And it's terrific that we found another developer to, to complete that project. So, now we have, you know, a holistic approach for all ten properties with two developers. So, I'm, I'm very happy with this. So, just, and I don't, when, Ms. Michaels, when these come through your office, did the, I guess I don't know how to ask this. The item comes through, and, and you, and the, the assessor, and economic development are all working on this, I would imagine, at the same time. They don't all come to you at the end, and then you write your cover letter? How, how is that?
Ideally, we'd work together, but more than, more often, we're brought in at the tail end.
Okay.
Economic development is trying to get committee meetings together, so everything's reviewed, and our office is involved at that time, and that, that has helped.
All right.
But it's still not ideal.
What I'm asking here is that you represent the concern of the valuation to the assessing office on behalf of council, so that we under- they understand the dilemma that, that is posed to us when we're trying to make a decision like this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will. Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question, Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Lafferty was, made the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes.
Mr. Noonan.
Yep.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is thirteen M, proposed resolution providing public notice of intent to sell six tax-reverted properties at twenty-three one eighty-four Byerman, seventy-two seventy-five and seventy-two seventy-nine Dodge, sixty-eight ninety-eight Lozier, sixty-eight eighty-nine Republic, and sixty-eight ninety-nine Republic, Warren, Michigan, for the total sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars, authorizing a sale and development agreement following the thirty-day notice period and accepting grant of easement rights, consideration and adoption of a resolution.
Support Noonan.
Need a motion.
Oh, I thought that was a motion, sir.
Mr. Noonan, you made the motion. You cannot yell from the audience, folks. I need a support. Support, Ms. McGee. Discussion.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lafferty.
And, and I explained to Ms. Michaels earlier on, on this particular one that I would ask to table this item to our next meeting, so that we could address the item that we had under thirteen C, and address both of these at the same time.
Support.
Oh, Mr. Lafferty made apologies for the yawn. Mr. Lafferty made a motion to table. Ms. Moore supported it. Tableau motion is on the floor.
Great.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes to table.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes to table.
Mr. Boyke.
Yes to table.
Mr. Noonan.
Sure.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Rogan C is a yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item, audience participation on general items.
Members of the audience would like to address city council related to general items, may do so. There's audience forms on the right side of the stage. First up is Lori Harris. After Lori Harris is Joel Vanderlinen.
Sorry, I've had to keep turning it on and off tonight.
I understand.
You're up.
It's been an interesting night, and for the sake of transparency, live streaming helps transparency. But it sounds like it also brought more people to comment on the situation that the committee of the whole was, was called for. And for those of you that voted i- in a way that just approves that appointment, did you really hear, number one, if the mayor is the only person who can hire, or fire, or end his job there, did you think that she would even be open to considering that if she was presented with information that suggested that he had done things that were inappropriate, possibly illegal? I'm not saying he did, but do you think the mayor would even hear you with her behavior tonight? Which was very disgusting in the committee of the whole meeting and here in this meeting. A complete lack of respect for the council, for the rule of law, for the way things are done. It's embarrassing. And I don't like to have to say that about her. I really don't. But it's really true. Who does that? So, I am really disappointed that, that your vote took any opportunity to investigate and deal with that, even if it proved him totally innocent of anything. You took away that opportunity, the four of you that voted to not deny. So, I want to point out that I went to the city garage at City Hall today, and it was restriped. And of course, Tony Baker is very concerned, and as we all should be, about ADA compliance. So, just want to let you know that whoever's in charge of verifying that these things are done correctly in the city aren't listening enough. On the ground level, there are nine, by the courthouse entry, nine accessible spots and one van accessible spot. By the City Hall side of the ground level, there, there are seven accessible spots and two van accessible spots. The van, I measured all the van spots. They are only eight feet wide. And the access aisle, if the, if the van spot is eight feet wide, has to also be eight feet wide, and it's not. The, the access aisles are only five feet wide. So, if the access aisle is only five feet wide, oh, shoot, the van spot is eleven, it's supposed to be eleven feet.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Vanderlinen. You ready?
Joel Vanderlinen, longtime Warren resident. We have the opportunity now to investigate the fire chief to see if all these rumors, or whatever, are true. I'm not doubting that some of this may be based on facts. But rumors alone, without the facts in front of us and presented to us, is not enough to deny this man the right to continue his job. Now, I'm not saying anybody's lying. They may be very true. So, if we get an investigation done, and we do a thorough investigation, or have an outside group do it, then we can have the mayor release him. And then we can have the mayor explain why, if she had knowledge of all this stuff, which she should, why she didn't release him herself earlier, and why it was brought before this council. Now, we had to talk about the atrium. Let's talk about Flag Day. Flag Day was created in nineteen, in seventeen seventy, no, seventeen sixty-eight. It was a group of military men put together to form an alliance against the British Army for our independence. It is the Army Birthday on June fourteenth to commemorate that. Later on, Betsy Ross made a flag, and they put Flag Day and the Army Birthday together.
You have about one minute, Mr. Vanderlinen.
We celebrate the Flag Day every year. We celebrate it with national pride and everything else. Now, Mayor Stone's having her illegal gay parade, and it's Flag Day, not fag day, and I take great
Mr. Vanderlinen, please.
disrespect.
Please, let's not use, let's not use derogatory terms, please.
You're taking up my time.
I will give you. I will give you some additional time.
You'll take you.
Please do not use derogatory terms.
A derogatory, well, it's disrespecting the United States Army. It's disrespecting the flag of the United States. It's not a rainbow flag. It's red, white, and blue. It's for courage, ingenuity. I forgot the last one. But either way, it's not rainbow, it's not for any other flag. It's for flag of the United States, it's for the flag of the Army. And I find it insulting that this council is allowing her to continue on.
You're, you're at time, and I added ten seconds to your time. Thank you. Next up is Bill Walshield. And then after Mr. Walshield is Jerry Bell.
Hello, ever, hello everyone. I'm Bill Walshield, I live on Martin, and, um, I came here to let you know, um, a false alarm that came across my iPhone on Friday night, Thursday night, Friday morning, um, during the, um, severe weather, thunderstorms that we were having. Um, I was attuned to the weather station, um, frequently during the night, and I was also attuned to the National Weather Service website with the severe weather that we're having. And I came across, and I heard a, um, loud alarm siren on my phone, and it came off as an emergency, and, um, I'll read it to you. It says, "Emergency alert, twelve-thirty-one AM. National Weather Service tornado warning in this area until one-fifteen AM Eastern Daylight Time. Take shelter now in a basement or an interior room on the lowest floor of a sturdy building. If you are outdoors in a mobile home or in a vehicle, move to the closest substantial shelter and protect yourself from flying debris. Check media." Um, I was very surprised at this, because I never heard of anything like this on the radio or the website. So, um, the next day, I called Macomb County to see if they had issued any tornado warnings. They said no. And they also said, which I confirmed, the weather service never issued any tornado warnings for Macomb County. There were some in Oakland County. Um, so, I really suspect the false alarm of such a serious nature to disrupt people's lives, to wake them up in the night and tell them to go take shelter in their bathroom or the basement, when there's nothing there to, um, protect themselves from. There's no tornado in Macomb County. So I, I called around, and they said, "Call, Warren has their own emergency management system." So I called there, and I didn't know who to call. So I ended up calling the police department, and I talked with a guy named Kramer, and he said he didn't issue anything, or he didn't know of anybody who issued anything, and he couldn't tell me. Um, there was no siren from Warren that was blaring, there was no all-clear to it. Um, and so I'm asking anybody here who knows that I can talk to, who might know something about this, because it's a false alarm, and it's very disturbing. I don't know who else got this, I did. Um, but alarms should not be falsified.
You're, you're at time.
Okay.
If you have a seat, we're almost finished with the meeting, um, certainly someone can get your phone number, and we can follow up.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
I want to take some time to thank, uh, Councilman Boyke, Councilman Noonan, Councilmember, uh, McGee, and Councilwoman Angela Rogan C. I want to thank you for not voting in favor of what Councilwoman Mindy Moore wanted you to vote for, in terms of the fire commissioners. What we saw tonight was something totally different than what we saw four weeks ago, when you all voted against the Motor City Sports Bar. After Councilwoman Moore told several lies about that bar, you told several lies, you described it as being a problem, this bar as being a problem. Truth of the matter is, they've never had tickets. They run their bar very well. And for you to demonize them as well as you did that fire chief tonight, you set him up, you ambushed him. That was very unprofessional. You could've did this in a closed meeting, or just, you know, with the council members, you know, one-on-one or whatever, why ambush him? My question to you, Ms. Moore, Councilwoman Ms. Moore, do you hate Negroes? Do you? Because it seems like all of your attacks has been racially motivated. It's been targeted towards African-Americans, yes it has, don't shake your head. You've been targeting people. This mayor fought hard today. She fought hard to get those appointments confirmed. She fought hard for those African-Americans today. I thought I'd never say that. But what I saw today, what I saw tonight, made me very, very, very happy. Mr. Lafferty, I agree with you, we all should have our day. Doesn't matter if we're German, African-American, pride, or whatever, we should have that. And I'm hoping that you all can work with this mayor to make things better for us here in the city of Warren. And it's not hard, it's not hard. If you plan on running for mayor, then run, when it's time. But until then, let's, let's get the city right.
You're at time, thank you.
Thank you.
Curtis Ashtash?
Curtis Ashtash from Harvest Time Christian Fellowship. Proverbs twenty-nine-two says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked beareth rule, the people mourn." What's going on in our city? What I saw tonight was absolutely disgusting. But even furthermore, we got rid of the prayer station, to some people's delight. How do we let a handful, a small contingent of people dictate what happens in our city? Are we trying to erase God from Warren? We've gotten rid of all of our nativity sets. They used to put up a nativity set at city hall. Just past Christmas, gone. We used to put one up on Van Dyke and Thirteen Mile where the big W is, gone, no nativity sets. You know, the prayer station in city hall, it was litigated, went to federal court, the citizens of the city supported it, and paid their good tax dollars to have it, and then we just erase it. Even the Christmas tree lighting ceremony is a joke nowadays. The flyer used to say, "Christmas tree lighting ceremony," because that's what we're celebrating, Christmas. Then we had the discussion, is it Christmas or just a holiday tree lighting? Well, we don't even call it a holiday tree lighting anymore, we just call it a tree lighting, because we don't want any reference to a holiday. It's Christmas, it's Jesus's birthday, we're celebrating Christmas. I mean, the post office still prints stamps with the Virgin Mary with the baby, they haven't bowed down to erasing God from everything. I bought some of those stamps last Christmas, but the city of Warren seems hell-bent to just get rid of God out of everything. And there's some evil actors up there that are just evil, so we already know where you're coming from. You know, with the seizure of the property from my church and the attack of my church, I kind of wonder what's going on. Can't even have a conversation with anybody in city hall, called the mayor's office, emailed the mayor's office, called the public service director. I mean, it's been ten days since they took our property, trying to figure out how to get our property back. Nobody cares to call back. I asked for a meeting with the mayor, crickets. I asked for a phone conversation with somebody in authority, crickets. I asked the public service director for a conversation, won't even return a phone call to a resident. I really did like the previous administration a lot more. Whether you liked it or not, you still got a phone call back, you still had communication both ways. But we have all these evil actors that, they just want to stab you in the back and play games, you don't even know what's going on.
That's right, Ms. Ashtash, thank you.
It's sad.
Next item, next item is council response to audience. Madam Chair?
Ms. Moore?
Um, just to clarify, um, earlier when we had our committee meeting of the whole, Chief Ferguson was offered to have the meeting, I wanted to have the meeting as a closed session, which we could. Chief Ferguson refused that offer to have a closed session. Earlier in the week, I expressed my concerns, um, that I understand were relayed to the mayor, and I had, was hoping that they would pull the, um, uh, the appointment, so that we had a little more time. I called to see yesterday if I, if the, uh, uh, Chief of Staff had heard anything, she said no. I heard no more from that point. Um, and to discuss, um, I, I don't think I ever said there was a problem inside the bar, in fact, I said there wasn't. I said there was, at Motor City, there was a problem in the parking lot. And as I understand, um, the owners of that bar are not African-American. And I received a call from one of the employees in that establishment, who indicated, Mr. Bell, that you went down there, and contrary to them being your friend, as you relayed to me, um, you inserted yourself and, um, suggested they make it a racial issue. And I, and you have done that numerous times, um, certainly since we've been on, since I've been on council, and if there's something that you think is going to be a little attention getting, you insert yourself, and, uh, this is a pattern of yours, and, um...
You can't yell from the audience.
I can, I can respond to what you said, that's in our rules. Relaying what the, what the people at the bar told me.
Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell, this is not a free-for-all, you don't get to just yell from the audience.
Yell, Bell.
No, I, I'm, end of conversation, Mr. Bell.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Bell, we're all very respectful to you when you come up here, no one cuts you off, we give you your three minutes.
Madam President?
Mr. Noonan?
Ms. Moore is done?
Yes, I will.
Ms. Moore, are you done?
Mr. Bell, please depart, if you're going to not be quiet.
I will, because I'm mad at you twice.
Thank you, please leave. Mr. Noonan?
Yeah, I, I wanted to respond to what Ms. Harris said. Um, I took a great deal of effort in trying to come to an understanding on what was going on with Mr. Ferguson. I, I didn't have, uh, any big briefing from anybody, uh, just that there was a question about, uh, whether he should be, uh, confirmed in that. And, um, I met with, uh, Melody McGee and, um, Mr. Ferguson and Skip, and we talked about what I had heard. I had heard rather serious allegations that, um, uh, the, um, general, generality of the firefighters weren't very happy with him, and I wanted to see how that could be improved. Um, and I thought, well, one thing would be to have him take a chief's training. Apparently, there's, there's, there's special courses in fire, for firefighters chiefs, and, um, I, I presented that to him, and at first, uh, while we were there, he, uh, wasn't very interested in it. Um, yeah, but tonight, at the council of the whole, he indicated that he, he was interested in that, and developing more rapport with the firefighters. I hope if he stays in there, that he will, in fact, make a concerted effort in that regard. He, you know, he was talking about it's a paramilitary organization, um, um, Ms. McGee was saying, Councilwoman McGee was saying, uh, it has to be run, uh, i- i- in a very strict fashion, because people's lives are on the, on the line. Also, only about fifty percent, uh, let's see, how did that go?
Fifty percent are, um, five years and more.
Fifty, fi, only fifty percent are five years or more. So, um, they have a, a big job to do there. And, um, also, just because, uh, he's gotten his appointment, doesn't mean that we can't investigate. I believe that, uh, Mr. Vanderlinen was quite correct in that. Um, and I expect that we will be, and I will probably be voting in favor of doing that, because if he was actually, um, making misallegations, then that would be unethical, that'd be, like, the, the infraction she was talking about, might or might not be minor, or might, you know, might be like petty to some degree for us to complain about. But if he lies to us, that's, uh, a much more, uh, serious thing. Also, if, from an HR, uh, point of view, if we were, um, if, 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 if we had a problem with a, a employee, we would want to give them due process, which would probably be three considerations, you know, we, we'll warn you once, we'll warn you twice, and third time, you're out. Well, to me, this was the first warning that anything was, uh, amiss with his performance might be, might be possible, and so far, there's still allegations, so I didn't have enough to vote on, in my opinion, to, to just deny him. I think, I think it'll probably come out that, that, uh, you're, you're right, but if I, that'll be in hindsight. Anyway, I, I, I really appreciate your, all your, your comments, you, you give me a lot to think about, thank you so much. And, uh, with that, I yield and wish everyone a good night.
Thank you. Any other responses?
Madam President, through the chair.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes, in response to Mr. Vanderlinen, um, yeah, I do believe that the city should be more cognizant as to the dates that they throw these special events and parties. I mean, Flag Day for us here in America, that's, that's a big day, and to throw a certain other event, or any other event, on that day, Flag Day, I think was just not a really good choice. Um, I'm all for having special events, parties, and everything here in the city, as long as we, the city, aren't footing the bill, um, for police service sanitation, things like that. But, I mean, there's other holidays that we don't even look at here in the city, and I think it's kind of sad, we don't consider Memorial Day, really, we don't consider Veterans' Day, and it's not really a special day for us in the city as far as promoting those events. So I just think that we need to focus on some of those events as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Any additional responses?
Madam President?
Mr. Lafferty?
Thank you. Uh, to Mr. Walshield, uh, in regard to your, the false alarm message, I went back through, I subscribe to all of the city of Warren messaging, text messaging, email messaging, and phone calling, there are several options for receiving messaging from the city. I went back, I checked my email, and I went back through, I did not receive anything from the city of Warren specifically, relative to that, but the best course of action that I would recommend, uh, is that you reach out to your phone carrier, and you give them the message details, and they can provide a trace and identify the source of the, the message, and who sent that out. So, and, like I said, I didn't receive it from the city of Warren, uh, it's very likely that the, uh, Civil Defense Emergency Management Officer responsible for the police department is correct. The Communications Department, uh, through Ms. Katon's office, can easily confirm that they did not send out any messages that evening, were not told to send out any messages, uh, but beyond that, I would strongly recommend you to contact your phone carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. It was far better of a response than I was going to be able to give. Uh, any, anything else? Okay, uh, next item.
Motion to adjourn.
Support Dwyer.
All in favor?
Hi.
You got me.